There's a new letter I didn't read.
Good evening, everyone. It's 5:30. So tonight, before we call this meeting to order, I just want to recognize the conflict that is happening in Israel and Gaza. And I wanted to open this meeting with a moment of silence for the innocents that have perished during the last few days. We've seen some pretty horrific violence and things going on, so there's human life here, right? So just like to open with a short moment of silence, so if you could join me for a moment of silence. Thank you. Thank you. So now I'd like to call the Tuesday, October 10th, Meeting of the Sierra Madre City Council to Order. Madam City Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Yes, thank you. Mayor Edward Garcia.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Kelly Krebs.
Here.
Councilmember Jean Goss.
Here.
Councilmember Christine Lo.
Present.
And Councilmember Robert Parkhurst.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, we have a forum this evening.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Councilmember Goss, would you like to lead us in the pledge and some inspiration?
Would love to. Please rise if you're able. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, I think the mayor and I are on the same page without having coordinated because I intended to keep the inspiration and invocation brief tonight. Obviously, the attack that took place this weekend is still in our hearts, in our minds tonight. Today, President Biden called this terrorist act, quote, "unadulterated evil," unquote, and vowed that the United States would, quote, "stand by Israel," close quote, during this painful and tumultuous time. I really can't improve on the president's remarks, and I really have nothing more to add. I was going to lead us in a moment of silence for the victims, the killed, the wounded, those taken hostage, including apparently a number of Americans. But we've already done that, and I thank you for your participation, and I ask for your prayers for the people of Israel.
Thank you, Councilmember Goss. Thank you. Okay, moving on to the agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda as presented, or is there anything that we would like to have pulled? I think we would like to get to that discussion at the end as quick as possible, but obviously, if somebody wants to pull something, let me know.
Mayor, if I may, item C on the consent calendar.
Yes.
Staff is asking if we could remove that item from the agenda to be considered out of future time. Staff would like to do some further analysis.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Should we swap the order of the hearing and discussion? Can we? Just considering of all the guests we've got here?
Yeah, I was thinking of that, and that could be... As we look at the agenda, and I don't want to slow the meeting down at all, consent generally goes pretty quick.
Right.
We do have some, a group of residents that do have some comment and consent, so throwing consent on the back would...
No, I'm sorry. I was looking at bringing the discussion before public hearing, is what I was trying to propose.
Yeah, that, we could, but I don't know that we're going to get a lot of public comment on that public hearing item.
Then let's keep it in the order then.
Yeah, okay.
And with that, I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda as amended by the city manager.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, carries unanimously. Thank you. Next, I'd like to entertain a motion for approval of reading of resolutions and ordinances by title only.
So moved.
Is there a second? Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Carries unanimously. Thank you. Okay, moving on to the approval of the meeting minutes from September 26, 2023. Do we have any substantive changes from the dais, or Madam City Clerk, have you received any suggestions via email?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Lo and Councilmember Parkhurst submitted their recommendations for correcting three typos within the minutes. Other than that, there were no substantive remarks.
And those remarks were not, were non-substantive? They were...
Correct. They were minor letters missing and such.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes as amended with typos?
I move that we approve the minutes from the September 26 meeting as amended.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Carries unanimously. All right, moving on to mayor and city council reports. Who would like to start?
I have no report.
That's... Thank you.
Hey, I have a brief report, Mr. Mayor.
Please.
Back on Wednesday, the 27th of September, the Transportation Subcommittee met yet again, as we do every two weeks. During that particular meeting, we met with the general manager of TransDev, which is a company that runs our current transportation system. And he came and helped us review our current system, and then provided us with a very interesting, I should say intriguing, option of a so-called micro-transit system using minivans and a virtual stop system somewhat like Uber. So we didn't make any, didn't have any real substantive discussion after that meeting. It took about two hours for his presentation to be concluded. But we will have a chance to discuss it tomorrow and during our next meeting, which is here in City Hall at 4 o'clock. And we'll also look at some of the other options that are available to improve our local transit service. And that's my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Goss. Councilmember Lo?
Let's see, I met after our follow-up with meeting and our presentation from Pasadena Unified School District. I met with Tina Frederickson September 29, and we had a discussion a little bit about some of the bond money that PUSD still has left over, and what their plans might be for the future to use that bond money. Also, equity for our Sierra Madre students for transportation to not just our local schools, but also to the schools that are open to all of Sierra Madreans to go all the way to the eastern and western parts of, sorry, the western parts of Pasadena. And then, of course, the newer unfortunate trends of social-emotional awareness for kids, and what we're doing for our students in Sierra Madre, as well as Pasadena Unified, and how we're addressing their needs and increasing counseling and therapy. And then, we both, Mayor Pro Tem Krebs and I, attended the National Women's Political Caucus of Pasadena Area's 50th Anniversary, and she presented an award. It was kind of a monumental evening, too, because it was the passing of Diane Feinstein. So it was a nice event to attend. And then, the Planning Commission was well-attended this last meeting. It was so exciting. There was about eight speakers, and it was positive. So, positive things. Good community input. But one of them was really neat. There's a house up there on Chaparral that was built with World War II army barracks kind of forms. And it was really neat how they added a second story to that that fit with the neighborhood, and to see all the community gather around speaking positively was nice. That's it.
Thank you, Councilmember Lo. Councilmember Parkhurst?
So, there were two meetings of the Clean Power Alliance. Nothing to report out of those. I also was at the transportation meeting with Councilmember Goss. And out of it, you know, one of the things that we were looking at is what is the public transit in the city? And so I looked into trying to take the metro-micro, and I wouldn't be here yet if I tried to take the metro-micro from my house.
I understand.
So, I'm going to keep trying and trying to evaluate, try to see, you know, trying to, you know, if we're going to improve transportation in this city, I want to understand what the transportation's like. Unfortunately, the Clean Power Alliance meetings conflict with the senior commission, but Chair Kroc is extraordinarily good at giving the updates on it. And so I have three quick things for that. Just to let folks know, if you're interested in the November bus excursion to Rogers Garden in Newport, it's full. We've got a full bus of 40 people heading down. That's great to hear. I'm glad to see such a full agenda for the senior program. The lunch program at the Hart Park House is going to be back up and running really soon, so that's really exciting. And then, mark your calendars, October 24th at 3:30 PM. Nancy Walz is going to get a plaque and presentation for her services to the city. And that's all I have to report.
Thank you, Councilmember Parkhurst. I just have a couple of things to report. On October 3rd, I provided an update on the city. It's called a mini trial run for the state of the city to the Rotarians at 7:00 AM. Great breakfast. It was well-attended. I just want to say how grateful I am to staff. We had, I think, over 15 staff members in attendance there to support me. And that means a lot to me as mayor to have the support of the staff to answer any questions that the Rotarians may have had. But it was unlike the state of the city, it was more of a Q&amp;A. And as you can imagine, when we got to public safety, a lot of the questions had to do with bears. So that was, I know how to amend my state of the city address a little bit, given the questions that I was receiving. So I think that was an important meeting. And the Rotarians are so great. Just like to thank them for their hospitality. These individuals, you see them all over town, and not just the capacity of Rotary, just volunteering constantly all over town. So I'm grateful for their service to this community. Later that day, I met with interim superintendent of the Pasadena Unified School District, Dr. Blanco, as well as the president of the school board, Michelle Richardson Bailey. And we spoke about issues that Sierra Madre residents are concerned about regarding the Pasadena Unified School District. As far as our public education is concerned, we did have a wonderful presentation a few weeks earlier regarding our elementary school and our middle school, but I was a little disappointed that we didn't have any presentation regarding the high school. And I think that's where a lot of our youth are falling off of the public school train, so to speak. A lot of them are going to private schools. So there are some great things at the public high school. So I really wanted an update on what's being done to liaise with our middle schools, to have tours and things of that nature, for our students to then understand what kind of education they can get at public school. And that concludes my report. I do have a few announcements. Like you to join us at the fire station this Thursday, October 12th, for our third annual Big Pumpkin Smash. The event starts at 4:00 PM. I don't know if any of you have attended it. I can't because I'm teaching that night, but it is, it's really fun for the kids. They bring a pumpkin, throw it off the tower behind the fire station. It's really exciting. So hopefully, you can attend. It's a great event. Thank you to our membership in the fire department for hosting that. Library, sorry, and the library, but it's at the firehouse, so. Also, the fire department is having a fire prevention festival this Saturday, October 14th. I mentioned this last meeting. It's from 9:00 AM to noon. It's a long meeting at the fire station. Again, this Saturday, from 9:00 AM to noon at the fire station, they'll be giving tours of the station, providing demonstrations on how to use fire blankets and fire extinguishers. And as I said last meeting, we don't generally get an opportunity to discharge our fire extinguishers, so I think it's important that us as residents know how to, when, and how to use those properly. So I think it's an important meeting to attend. Hopefully, it's well-attended. Also, please join us for the annual Mayor State of the City address. I titled it "Laying a Foundation for Our Future." This will take place next Tuesday, a week from tonight, October 17th at 5:30 in the Sierra Madre Elementary School Auditorium. There'll be some, the fifth graders are going to do some entertainment, and I think it's going to be a great evening. Also, on October 19th, follow, from 12:30 to 2:30, and I said this last time, and it's hard to say, there will be Bing Boo, bingo, but Bing Boo at the Hart Park Senior Center. There's still time to register for this event, and as you know that the bingo at the senior center sells out. So make sure you get your registration in. And finally, join the Sierra Madre Police Department for their first annual health fair at Memorial Park. There will be free health screenings, raffles, and community resources. The event is on Saturday, October 21st, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Once again, the annual health fair at Memorial Park by RPD, Saturday, October 21st, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And that concludes my announcements. All right, so moving on to public comment for items not on the agenda. I know quite a few of you are here for a couple different agenda items, but if you would like to make public comment for items not on the agenda, there's a yellow card. It doesn't look quite like this, but it's about this color in the back. Please fill out the yellow card and hand it to our city clerk. I do want to do a little quick read on our public participation code of conduct, and that, this is not just for items not on the agenda. This is conduct that's necessary for agenda items as well. So your participation is welcome and invited at all city council meetings. The council requests that participants refrain from making personal, slanderous, profane, or disruptive remarks. A person who continues to disrupt the orderly conduct of the meeting after being warned by the mayor or designated to cease the disruption may be precluded from further participation in the meeting. No signs, posters, or other large objects shall be brought into the council chambers or other meeting place if doing so would disrupt, disturb, or otherwise impede the orderly course of the meeting. And with that said, I know we have, at the end of the agenda, an item that a lot of people are emotional about. And I just want to remind you that applauding during public comment, or booing during public comment, or anything of that nature, is disrupting the orderly conduct of the meeting. So I ask, please, that you refrain from that, because I will have to ask you to stop and stop the meeting if that happens, because everybody is entitled to their speech here at the lectern. So we want to make sure that everybody gets their words in, and they're not deterred from voicing their opinion. So out of equity for everybody, please refrain from applause and booing. Thank you. Okay, so let's open up public comment for items not on the agenda. Madam City Clerk, do we have any yellow speaker cards?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city clerk's office did not receive any emails on this topic, although we did get two speaker cards. First, from Becky Chang from Athens Services.
Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council members. I'm Becky Chang, Director of Government Services Affairs with Athens Services, your waste managing partner. My colleague Timothy Yay and I are here today to introduce ourselves as your new point of contact for the city. The city will be implementing a source-separated waste and recycling program to comply with the requirements of California Senate Bill 1383, and to ensure that organic waste is diverted from landfills. So with the recent incident of bears, Athens will be exchanging residents' existing green cart for a bear-resistant organic screen barrel to collect green waste, food scraps, and food soil paper products. The self-locking barrel is designed to minimize container access from bears. Starting the week of October 30th, Athens will be deploying the bear-resistant barrels. After the green barrel has been serviced on the regular service day, please leave it on the curb side for Athens to collect. At the same time, Athens will be delivering a new 96-gallon bear-resistant green barrel to the resident's house. 196-gallon bear-resistant organic barrel will be provided to each single-family residential household at no extra charge. A bear-resistant barrel is available to multifamily properties depending on need for additional fee. Tim and I have brought a bear-resistant green barrel that will be deployed at the end of the month for your preview. And lastly, Athens will also be hosting an annual free compost event coming up Saturday, October 14th, from 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM at the Sierra Vista Park at the west end of the parking lot. And we're here for questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chang and Mr. Yay. Generally, we don't ask questions during public comment, but I think this is kind of a public service announcement. Do we have any...
Absolutely.
Any questions that would help our residents? Yes, please.
Thank you for your presentation. Appreciate the information. To the extent that residents currently have a bear-resistant black can, probably, and are paying for that, is there going to be outreach to them about being able to discontinue that? Because we really don't expect bear attractants to no longer be in the black can.
Yes, yes, correct. So we have internally been setting out individual customized messages via mail, USPS postal mail, to each of our customers, you know, depending on their situation. So we have been doing that. Thank you.
Right. I just want to emphasize that, because I think there's been some confusion about needing to continue to have the black bear can. And I think, I think everyone just needs to understand that there really shouldn't be anything in the black can going forward. That would be an attractant to bears, so there's really no need to have that, correct?
Correct. So we'll make sure that that gets, you know, implemented, that makes sure that the proper marketing materials, collateral will go out for residents. And also, we'll make sure our city manager and Mr. James Carlson will also be receiving copies of those as well for your preview.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. And I think, just for the benefit of the public, some residents do have larger parcels, which require more than one green can. Will you be swapping one green can and leaving the multiple cans on properties, or do we have to re-request extra cans?
I think, right now, the discussion is, yes, we'll just keep them as it is. But everybody whose current residential or single-family will get an automatic one-barrel, bear-barrel swap, and the rest will stay. That's correct.
Thank you, Ms. Chang.
Thank you. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, the next speaker is David Gordon.
Good afternoon, David Gordon, Sierra Madre Playhouse. First of all, we had a wonderful special evening on September 22nd. Representative Judy Chu came along to introduce an evening at the theater. She has made us a not-profit of the year in her very large constituencies. We're very grateful to her. And I'm grateful to Mayor Garcia for coming along to welcome her, and also to councilmembers Krebs and Goss for coming along to that rather wonderful evening. So the next thing we have on is Corey Cable Kidder, coming back to the playhouse yet again. This year, she's doing a 1940s military-style USO kind of concert with a band of four people. She usually sells out, so I would advise you to get your tickets early. There are some major improvements taking place outside the theater, and I would like the city for listening to us and taking us into account, creating a new sort of landscape area outside the playhouse. And it's been a pleasure to work with Mr. Chimino and his colleagues. Thank you very much indeed. While we're talking about bears, if we weren't, we are now, I would recommend that everybody reads an article in The New Yorker by Jill Lepore, July 17th of 2023. The bear problem is not just affecting Sierra Madre, it's affecting the whole of the United States. The bear population everywhere is going up. A student at Rutgers University was killed while hiking. There are bears in New Jersey, New York, and in Texas. So we're part of a national movement on which we have to be very cognizant and listen to see what other people are doing about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon.
Mr. Mayor, there are no other speaker cards submitted for non-agenda items.
Thank you. So moving on to the next item on our agenda, it is an honor to welcome our Assemblymember Chris Holden, Assemblymember of the 41st District, to give us a legislative update. Mr. Holden, thank you for attending. It's okay to clap for Mr. Holden.
Thank you, Mayor Garcia, and Mayor Pro Tem Krebs. It's an honor to be here with you as always. This is my favorite city.
We won't tell Pasadena that.
You know, I had an opportunity to come to the Wisteria Festival last year, and it was amazing, as always, every year. This is one of the most engaging communities that I represent, and one that you always feel at home, whether you live here or not. So you've been very kind to me over the last 11 years, and my ability to represent you. It's been a pleasure to engage with you on topics, and for you to share with me what your issues are, including your needs, that we could find moments and opportunity to step in and be supportive of. So even though I have another year to go, it is a pleasure again to be here with you and to give you a briefing on what some of the things you may already know and be aware of, and others may be new. But let me just say that this is my second year that I've completed now as the Chair of Appropriations, and it has been quite an experience. I've had 4,000 encounters with individuals who had conversations around, or members around various pieces of legislation. And as a fiscal committee, we do our best to try to make sure that what we're putting forward is legislation that's going to be good for the people of the state of California, but it's good policy. And sometimes we have to make sure that the fiscal part does not hold us back, but that we allow the governor and the members to engage on it fully. Since being a member of the legislature, I've introduced and had signed into law 150 bills, or was a co-author on, and it has been an amazing opportunity to address a variety of topics. Several, and many have been first-in-the-nation type of bills, and two that I'll report on tonight fall into that category. The first bill, 1228, is a measure which uplifts fast-food workers to improve their workplace conditions while simultaneously ensuring that our small businesses and emerging chains are not placed in a competitive disadvantage. This bill increases wages for fast-food workers to $20 an hour starting in April of 2024, gives franchisees and workers a voice in regulation, and creates a structure for all stakeholders to collaborate effectively. AB 776, which is probably my favorite bill this year, renames the 210 Freeway in commemoration of tribal lands, and requires our state agencies to work with local indigenous groups to identify appropriate locations to pay homage to sacred lands. AB 368 would require the governing board of a community college district participating in a CCAP partnership to enroll high school students in any course that is part of a CCAP partnership offered at a community college campus and authorizes courses to be offered at the college or high school campus, which is very important, because it gives accessibility to have the courses, the college courses taught at a high school campus, because it's sometimes challenging for the students to get to a community college. AB 1204 addresses the issues of employees being misclassified as independent contractors in the construction industry by ensuring accurate certificate payroll reports to decrease the likelihood of project abandonment. AB 1244 enhances public safety by setting standards for qualified manager under the Private Investigator Act and Private Security Services Act to hold a current and valid certificate issued by the Director of Consumer Affairs. AB 43, this is another one of those first-in-the-nation type bills. It builds on a previous bill, bill that I authored last year, 2446, relating to carbon emissions, and allows the state board to integrate the embodied carbon trading system into the low-carbon building standard framework on or before December 31st, 2026, and to implement the system after January 1st, 2029. We have a number of mental health bills. As you recall, in 2004, California voters passed Proposition 63, the Mental Health Services Act, which transformed our state's behavioral health system. Under MHSA, counties have to develop their three-year expenditure plans with local stakeholders, including adults and seniors with severe mental illnesses, their families, service providers, and law enforcement. Mental health continues to be a priority for the legislature, and I'm pleased to report that the governor has also signed AB 289, which requires inclusion of youth mental health organizations to list stakeholders that counties must confer with when developing their three-year expenditure plan under the MHSA. In other words, giving the young people an opportunity to set what they believe is the best way for them to engage and be engaged with in dealing with mental health concerns. SB 43, which I principal co-authored with Senator Susan Eggman, expands the definition under the Letterman-Petrus Short Act of gravely dis- of gravely disabled for the purpose of invol- involuntary detainment of an individual who suffers with a mental health disorder or substance use disorder. I'm proud to say that this year, uh, we've made massive multi-year commitments to the state's infrastructure. Funding schools, higher education, broadband infrastructure, and clean transportation system to assure California's success for generations to come. Earlier this year, the governor called for a special extraordinary session, uh, to address gas price gouging. After robust conversations in both houses on March twenty-eighth of twenty twenty-three, the governor signed into law SB two legislation that implements the strongest state-level oversight and accountability measures on big oil. Housing and homelessness. In an area of homeless and housing, uh, the state budget contained funding of one billion dollars for the homeless housing assistance and prevention program, as well as five hundred million allocated to the Mental Health Services Fund for the behavioral health bridge program. This program supports people experiencing homelessness with serious behavioral health conditions through the short-term bridge housing. Public transportation. In the area of public transportation, my colleagues and I agreed upon a plan that includes a total of five point one billion for four years, restoring the full four billion for consideration and adding the one point one billion from cap and trade. With complete flexibility to, for agencies to use the money for operations and construction. Extending the goal line remains a top priority for me and many of us, uh, to make sure that this system is completed all the way to the San Bernardino line. Uh, I'm optimistic that this funding can help extend the goal line to Claremont and Montclair. And, and I might add on this particular item, uh, the members of this, the Los Angeles delegation sent a letter to the, uh, transportation agency to let them know that the money that's making its way to Metro for the priority projects, the goal line is the number one project. So even though there's flexibility to do operations, the expectation is that it's going to be to fund the project. Bond measures. My colleagues and I also passed important bond measures to go before the voters for the November twenty twenty-four ballot that addressed housing and climate-related issues. ACA one proposes amendments to the California Constitution to allow a city, county, or special district with fifty-five percent voter approval to incur, uh, bond indebtedness or impose specified special taxes to fund projects for affordable housing, permanent supportive housing, or public infrastructure. ACA two would establish the Water and Wildfire Resiliency Fund within the state treasure and would require the treasurer to annually transfer an amount equal to three percent of all state revenues that may be appropriated as described, uh, from the general fund to the Water and Wild, Wild, Wildfire Resiliency Fund. But it will only happen as if you can say what the title of this represents. Uh, SCA, I'm, I'm tickling myself up here. What can I say? ACA two, uh, let's see, ACA two would lower the voting age from eighteen to seventeen, uh, if approved by the voters. And SB six thirty-eight, Egman, a Climate Resiliency and Flood Protection Bond Act of twenty twenty-four, which if approved by the voters on November fifth, twenty twenty-four, statewide election ballot would authorize six billion in general fund obligation bonds for flood protection and climate resiliency projects. I'm proud to report that the legislature was also able to secure funding in specific areas to help statewide. Three hundred million for the Local Control Funding Formula to address equity gaps in student achievement. Sixty-one million to address opioid overdose. Unfortunately, addictive and deadly drugs, like fentanyl, have affected so many families and ended too many lives. It is my hope that these funds would deliver drug reversal medication and direct people to drug, drug treatment facilities and programs. Twenty-five million to address lead testing, which included an allocation for the lead testing and mitigation resources contained in my bill, AB two four nine. I'm disappointed that the governor vetoed this bill. Um, it was one that we thought was getting right to the heart of the matter in terms of being able to test, uh, on school campuses, Title One school campuses. And that if identified, we lowered, we, we upped the standard, uh, to five parts per billion from the state and federal level of fifteen parts per billion. Because as we all know, any amount of lead that's ingested by anyone, but certainly our young people, can affect their growth and, and mental development. Uh, so I was disappointed to see that the governor, uh, did not sign that bill, but there is money in the budget to continue to build on the importance of the issue. Uh, despite the project deficit, um, I continue to fight hard to ensure that my local communities would be a direct recipient of any state funds possible. That is why I'm glad to secure, that we were able to secure ten million for the city of Sierra Madre for the library because that would be really hard to have done this year. Now, the last thing I will bring up, um, I know it's a bear of an issue for you.
See what you did there.
Okay, all right. Uh, but more importantly, um, I want to take a moment to address an issue that I know has raised concerns around safety here in Sierra Madre and the community. And while bears may seem cute, uh, they can be very deadly. And none of us want them in our homes, near our pets, or our garbage cans, or, or our children. Uh, first, I want to acknowledge all of the incredible effort that your local officials have put into curbing, uh, the, the bear problem. From investing in bear-proof garbage cans to holding public educational meetings on how to not contribute to bear problems. These are all very important to correcting the issue and I vow, uh, to help in whatever way I can. My office has been in constant communication, uh, with the city and we look forward to being a part of the conversation as you continue. And whatever we can do to be helpful, uh, we are prepared to, to do that and more. So again, thank you for giving me an opportunity to come before you today and look forward to a continued strong relationship moving forward. And anything we can continue to do to support the city of Sierra Madre, don't hesitate to call. And I'll, I'll make myself available for questions or any conversation you'd like to share with us on the, on the issues of the bear, uh, dynamics here in the city.
Thank you, Assembly Member Holden. Uh, any, any questions or comments from the council? Please.
So, uh, first, thank you for your leadership. Um, that was quite the list of things, um, very, very impressive. Uh, in particular, um, for me personally, I appreciate you, the, the work that you're doing around, um, getting the embodied carbon incorporated into building standards. I think that's great. It's a great way to, to move us towards, uh, zero carbon as, as we go forward. So, thank you for that. I'll pick up on the bear theme and, and it, there's a very, uh, simple ask that I've got. There, there is a young lady who is, is here tonight, uh, Mackenzie Rich. She's one of three, um, wildlife conflict specialists. Um, they're, uh, three people for five counties. Um, they have been incredibly essential to helping us deal with the bear problem. Um, and they're only funded until June thirtieth of next year. So, um, it's, it's a program that's, that's relatively new, if I understand correctly. Um, it would be incredible to, to, yeah, continue to fund that. Um, we couldn't, uh, make the, the, we couldn't address the, the challenges that we've had without, um, that resource here. Um, she and her colleagues have just been really helpful in educating the community out there, helping us trying to trap bears. Um, it's still a problem. It's, it, we're not there yet, but without that, it would be that much more difficult.
No, I, I appreciate that. And again, um, you let us know what we need to fight for and where we need to identify resources. If you can identify what you think that ultimate budget impact might be, uh, because in recent times, we've not, we funded one-time pro- uh, programs. We've not necessarily funded for ongoing, uh, costs, um, pressure points. So, but look, I think that what we're trying to do now is to make sure that there's certainly, um, uh, tested and, and knowledgeable people on the ground who can interface with the community and know how to respond. So if there's an uptick even more than what we're dealing with or a drop off, that we can all be, uh, responsive to that. And I think we all want to be humane in how we deal with the bears, but at the same time, we want to make sure the community's safe. And so this is a public safety, uh, issue and I'm happy to, uh, to go to bat for you to try to get, uh, the dollars in place to secure the positions.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, I just, uh, it's great to hear all the work that you're doing and, and you, you truly do, uh, put the money, put the money where your mouth is or other way around, right? So, I, I'd just like to say again, a debt of gratitude for you specifically for, for, um, helping us secure that ten million dollars for our library. Um, and we've been working diligently to meet a deadline. I'm, I'm happy to, uh, announce that we, we did get a little bit of an extension. So, um, that deadline was pretty, was looming. Uh, so we're, we're thrilled that we have a little bit more extra, a little bit of time to, to spend that, those funds. Um, I'm thrilled to hear about the Water and Wildlife Resiliency Fund, especially for our community. Uh, those are two things that are, uh, very important to our community. And just to expand on, um, what, uh, Council Member Parker said, um, our wildlife, uh, conflict specialist, she, uh, she has a very large region, um, that she is in, in charge of. So, you know, our, you know, our goal is to even not only keep her around or someone in that position, but we, we really like her, um, to, uh, have that position maybe a little more localized. Um, you know, I, I talked to other leaders in the cog and, um, it's just not, it's not just bears, which bears are a big issue, but it's also coyotes and mountain lions and other wildlife interface, um, issues, uh, that have conflict with humans. So, um, it would be great to have, as this problem seems to be exacerbating, um, to have somebody around that can, can help guide the policy. Um, I know that they only take policy and they can only work within the policy, but if their boots on the ground are saying this is what's happening and it's different than what was happening before, I think Sacramento will listen a little bit more. So, um, if we could get funding for that, that, that'd be wonderful.
And if you, and if you identify, um, elements of policy, that state policy that you think needs to be, um, modified in some way, either strengthened or relaxed, um, highlight that for us as well.
Yeah, for sure. Um, and I think we've got ideas about that, um, especially given our geography relative to other geographies where bears have been issues such as mammoth or South Lake Tahoe. As you know, we are very different geographically and we're an urban area, not a, not a rural area. Um, so it's, it's, to have one policy for the entire state, I think, is a little bit of a problem. It hasn't been looked at in over twenty years. So, thank you for that. I, I do appreciate it and we will take you up on that.
Well, and you know, this, this seat that I, um, occupy, uh, it, the district extends into San Bernardino County and into the areas of Wrightwood and on the other side into the High Desert, uh, Pinon Hills and, and Fielan. So it's a, it changes quite a bit, but one thing is constant, the Angeles Forest makes up the entire district. So it gives us understand, uh, understand that the dynamics and the shifting impacts from one end of the district to the other. So the fertile communities are gra- are greatly impacted and really do cry out for having, um, targeted, uh, staff support that can be easily accessible, uh, to the, to the communities around here. But also as we move into the San Bernardino part of this district, uh, I think that there's also a need there. So there can be a collaborated sharing of resources for an area that has such an impactful area, beautiful area. We're blessed to have the Angeles Forest right in our backyard, but as you pointed out, uh, there are a lot of things that come along with that that, um, mean that we have to monitor and, and make sure that we're adapting, uh, in a, in an appropriate way. So, uh, we're here for you.
Thank you, Assembly Member. Did it, did I jog your, uh, memory, Mayor Protem on a?
No.
Okay, I saw you. Okay.
No taking.
Okay. Well, thank you again for your eleven years of service to, uh, to this district and we, we wish you, uh, the best for your final year, um, in the district. And we're, we're grateful for all that you've done for the city and this community. Thank you. Okay, moving on, um, before I move on, I do want to recognize, um, we do have Assembly Member Holden here, but we also do have representatives from, um, uh, County Supervisor Barker's office, as well as, um, uh, State Senator Portentino's office. Am I missing anybody else? I do see, uh, a couple staffers. Okay. Well, thank you for being here on, on this important night for us. Uh, moving on our agenda, it's my understanding that, um, that postal carrier, uh, Joanne Mendeville was not able to join us today. Is that, is that correct? Okay. So, um, we'll move on to the next presentation. Uh, we have a presentation by Fire Chief Bartlet on the Genesis and Rave Critical Communication Safety Systems that we discussed at last council meeting.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem and, uh, council members. It's, uh, an exciting presentation that, uh, I'm bringing to you this evening. It's designed to be a high-level view at this point. It's, uh, going to be talking about a couple platforms that we're looking to roll out. Uh, city management and the staff has been working pretty diligent on this, as lo- as well as our recently acquired, uh, emergency coordinator, Bob Spears. Um, we're really trying to enhance what we're able to do for the public as far as emergency response, um, emergency awareness and, uh, notification efforts. And so we've come across a couple, uh, programs or platforms that we're going to be able to roll out to the public. We're tightening up the last couple pieces to this and, and, and so that everything was going to tie together. And then we're going to be doing an educational component, uh, to the community on, on what the platforms are and how they're going to benefit, uh, the residents. And so, um, with that, we found that this is going to be a great opportunity to tie it into what we've already been referring to as our SMART program, which is Sierra Madre Achieves Resiliency Together. Um, and so with that, I'm just gonna, we'll go forward on, on, uh, the emergency preparedness. And so the first product is, uh, what is referred to and, and what the public will know it as is Genesis Protect. If anybody's been following it, uh, through the past, uh, year or so, it may be known as Zone Haven. Uh, for whatever reason, they, they've changed the branding and they've changed the name. So, uh, going forward, it's, it is being known as, as Genesis Protect. And basically what it is, it's going to allow the residents to have a public-facing, um, web-based platform that we've already identified our city into separate zones. Um, and we currently have nineteen different zones. The reason that we have broken those down are for, uh, for the management of evacuations, for one, is so we can do it systematically and safely and efficiently. And so this Zone Haven product, or excuse me, Genesis Protect product, um, we've incorporated our zones that we've already had pre-existing. And, and this is a statewide program. Um, as far as I'm aware, besides LA County, uh, unincorporated cities, we're the first ones to get ours up and live. So I'm kind of proud of that as well. Um, everybody else will be trailing us and, and, and trying to catch up. Uh, but this will be going live and a matter of fact, we do have the QR codes, which, um, we're going to have these out. So if you visit us this weekend, we'll have some information out as well. But, uh, through your, through your apps, either through an Android or an Apple device, you can download, um, this platform. Both things that I'm going to talk about are opt-in programs, unfortunately. It'd be nice if we can acquire this, but we're going to need the participation from the residents to join in on this. And I don't see why they won't because it's going to be a great benefit. Um, but basically to go forward, and I apologize for the size of this, but this is a screenshot of the website. Um, and really what it is, is you can see Sierra Madre there with some, uh, with our zones. And so there is a backside to this program that, uh, basically we will have city staff, uh, will have, uh, the ability to activate certain zones. Uh, for instance, we want to, if we want to evacuate just the lower canyon, for whatever reason, mud and debris flows, fires, um, get them a head start because of the, the traffic flow and the patterns, we can send that out just to them. The other benefit of this is once somebody has signed up and they know their zone, and that's going to be the platform we're based on, is please know your zone at all times. Um, you, if you're displaced, you go to, uh, friend's relative's house, you're, you're up in a hotel, you can always check this platform to know your status. So we won't have to be, um, very, as diligent trying to worry about keeping people informed on when are we going to repopulate, where are we at? Are you in a, just an alert phase? Are you in an evacuation manage? So we'll be able to get that out in this platform. Um, and residents will be able to check up on it at any time. Um, on the back-facing side, we can also use it in the EOC or the Emergency Operations Center as, um, as a tool for us to manage road closures, barricades, blockades. as a tool for us to manage road closures, barricades, blockades, evacuation points and everything else. So, we will have that function behind the scenes downstairs in our Emergency Operations Center. So, really excited about that. The other component that's going to tie this all together is what is referred to as Rave, and again, for whatever reason, it's going to have a public-facing view of what is referred to as SMART 911. Again, an opt-in component where our residents will opt into this, we'll be able to tie that in. The Genesis Alert is not a notification system, it's more of a management type of component. The Rave and SMART 911 is our alerting system. So, we're looking to enhance what we already have in place through Nixls, through social media, through the website, and our other means that we've used in the past, especially during Bobcat, but we're looking at ways to, you know, we've done the town halls, we've done other things else, and people need more notification, more options. This will include landlines. Those are going to get transferred over, our understanding, automatically. So, anybody that still has the old-school landlines will be, get automatically transferred over, the rest will be an opt-in, and we'll have to get people to sign up. But again, the beauty of this is it will tie into that Genesis platform to, again, referring to the Lower Canyon if we want. If we just, and it's Zone Eight, for those that live there, if we want to evacuate Zone Eight, we can just go into this notification system, the geo-caching, or however you want to look at it, is already there. We select Zone Eight, and only those people get notified. So, we're really getting down to a more detailed look at this versus the whole city getting a notification, or multiple people getting a notification. We can really control how we're going to disseminate this information. Again, we're very excited about it. We've done a lot of work trying to check, check our facts and get this all tied in. Two different kind of entities involved in this and getting them working, but I think we're very close to making that happen. And at this point, I'm prepared to answer any questions, but again, I wanted to let you know that this is coming, and we're about ready to roll this out very soon, hopefully within, within the next month. There's going to be a good educational push going on it as well.
Thank you, Chief. Do you have any questions for Chief Bartlet? Please, Mayor Protem.
So, I'll start by saying I'm a proud member of Zone 18 and happy to, you know, lead that, lead that charge. I don't know if we're going to do like zone competitions or...
[laughing]
But no, just my question was, in terms of the communication plan, are we going to use the sort of current Nixel and other sort of mass communication tools to introduce this and encourage people to sign up? Because I feel like that migration is going to be, you know, difficult. We do oftentimes have trouble reaching all of our residents, given the varied ways they get information.
Very well taken. And we're going to use all of our current platform, existing platforms to market this as well, as well as any opportunities, for instance, the Fire Prevention Festival that we have. We're just going to try and push this out. I'm going to propose that we work with our public safety partners and the Police Department to get through to their neighborhood watch programs, just however we can get this word out, we're going to get it out, and hopefully, it just will catch. I know our community is, is very participative, participative?
Sorry.
Is involved
[laughing]
in, in the wellness of their neighbors and in the wellness of our community. So, I think even through word of mouth, it will really catch. But we're, we're really happy on this one, because it's not only wildfires, this is, this could be earthquakes, mud, debris flows, if we're going to get our El Nino season like we're predicted, it'll really come in handy. So, we're very happy that we're being able to offer this and add this into what we're presenting as, you know, as our public safety plans.
Great, thank you.
Please.
Zone 13 here. So, I'm, I understand how Genesis works. I've signed up here as we're sitting here, so that's great, looks really helpful. How do people sign up for Rave? That's not clear to me, and how is it interconnected with Genesis?
That is going to be a separate opt-in. It, they're two different platforms. We're going to get that one rolled out. The final answers actually came to us today on some questions we were asking, and one was the Rave versus SMART 911. We found out that the SMART 911 is the public-facing part of it. Rave component is, again, the management portion, where we can see everybody that's opted in. We could start working the magic behind the, behind the scenes. So, we will get the information out on how people get into SMART 911. For those that want to try and check it out, you can actually go to that website now and probably be able to find the link to Sierra Madre, we do have an account with them, and it's ready to go. And the beauty of this is it's all free. This is a state program through CalOES, as far as that notification thing goes. So, we've only done our due diligence on trying to enhance what we're doing, but we've done it very fiscally responsible as well. So, yeah, so to answer your question, is that, it's still forthcoming, but it's about ready to roll out really soon.
Both are free?
Both are free, yes. The Zone Haven Genesis is, was a county effort, and again, they, they got us into it, got us started, got to help us with our zones and getting those mapped out for the foothill communities. Anybody that didn't have an interface, they're still, they're still out there. County will be working on them, but it's, it's the unincorporated cities and the foothill communities as well that have kicked us off and initiated it.
Just, Councilmember Low, please.
I have two questions. My first question was, maybe you could tell us what happens if all our cell services down, as well as power? How would people then therefore be alerted during an emergency?
We can always go to the town favorite, right? We can start doing the sirens and everything else as well. So, we, we are working on putting together our complete plan, which is going to incorporate some of the newer technology that we have, along with pre-existing legacy things to include the sirens. When all else fails, those are going to work. And so, we're going to have to identify when that sounds, what does it mean, right? So, all the way down to old school.
Because I think seven, 60% of our population is in the senior citizen level, so I was thinking that would be a little harder with the technology-based things. But I do like the landline, thank you. My other question was if, so when we signed up, it says you're assigned to your own zone. Can you see the alerts from all the other zones? Can you see who is evacuated and who's not?
Unfortunately, right now, the, at least the way I'm understanding it, it's been explained to me, is you only have the ability to follow one zone at a time. You could switch that up if you want. So, for instance, if we got Zone 17 or 18, you can follow that, and no matter what, you're going to get updates on that zone. You can then go into the, into the program, and you can click on some zones yourself and see what's going on in that particular zone. So, you can, you have the ability as a, as a user to look at any zone you want, and select one that will continuously update you.
Thank you, Chief. Zone 14 here. As, and I just want to make sure, this might be nuanced, but maybe you don't have the answer, but you said old-school landlines. I have, I guess, a new-school landline. It's a, it's a fiber line that comes in, I guess it's technically VoIP. I have a battery backup on it in case power does go out, that it can, it can continue to run. Is that, are those lines going to be self-populated as well, or is it, would I have to opt in with that?
My understanding is, is all landlines, to include VoIP, will be transferred over automatically. It's, it's the cell or the mobile phones that we're going to have to have the opt-in on.
Okay, that's good to know. Thank you.
My pleasure.
Chief deserves a clap. Okay, moving on to our last presentation before we get into the consent calendar. It's the update on the status of the Library Meaningful Improvement Project. This is a standing agenda item. Generally, we hear from Deputy Director Yanez and Librarian Regan, and I see them coming on down. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Honorable Members of the City Council. Honorable Yanez, Deputy Director of Public Works for the City of Sierra Madre. I begin tonight reporting that we did experience slight delays in the project that needed to be addressed immediately. Those issues consisted of library construction, mathematical calculations, dimensions, depth, width, et cetera. I'm very happy to say that those delays have been resolved. I'm pleased to report that we continue to move forward with this project. This past week, the city received, this past week, the city received the design development document, which is this document here. This, this document consists of 167 engineering computations, drawings, et cetera, detailed civil and structural analysis of the project. In the upcoming week, I will continue to review this report, then return the document to TSK Architects with my findings. I will consult with City Manager Reynoso, along with Director Semino regarding my findings. I do expect some possible back-and-forth between TSA's calculations and the city's calculations. It is expected of a, in a project of this magnitude. At that point, after completing the report with my findings, TSK will initiate the construction document phase, which is the drawing of the blueprints, construction drawings, a very positive step. Ladies and gentlemen, at this time, this concludes my report. I will address any, any questions you may have.
Any questions for Deputy Director?
Two.
Yes, please.
So, I saw in the consent agenda, there was some funds for furniture for library relocation, about $24,000. Is that, is that racks? What, I'm just curious what the furniture is that we're, we're purchasing. I can't imagine anything for the library.
This will be a Librarian Regan's question, sir.
Hello, Mayor Garcia. Hello, Mayor Protem Creves and our wonderful City Council members. Leila Regan, City Librarian here. We did need some additional mobile shelving. We are relocating as much shelving as we can from our current library, but the very large wooden shelving is not going to be able to come over with us. So, we had to get a little bit more additional shelving.
Got it. And then, then in the storage contract that we've got, the storage, there's some of it that will be stored off-site. Is that right?
About half the collection, so about 50% of our linear shelf footage will be stored off-site.
Is there any additional insurance or anything we need to have? Like, we, we've got some funds that ensures that in the move, you know, a per-weight type of thing, in case it's damaged and you move, but in, in the storage, if it gets too hot or if it, you know, if a sprinkler system goes, if something gets damaged, is there any, do we need to have special insurance to, to preserve our collection?
I'm not sure if we have special liability insurance, but I know that depending on the moving company we go with, they have additional offerings as far as insurance capabilities.
For, for the storage compulsion?
For the storage.
Compulsion, okay. Because I'd hate to lose the fabulous collection that we've got. I know that the archives are going to stay here, which I think is, is good and stay under our control, but still, if half of our collection is somewhere else, it'd just be good to know what we've got covered on that.
Absolutely. And our archive collection has been fully relocated to 350 West Sierra Madre Boulevard, so our temporary location upstairs. So, that has been entirely completed. So, we do not have any archives at the library currently, and our archivist is currently trying to organize there as well.
Councilmember Parker, if I may add, the, the contract does offer, I think, at least two additional options for additional insurance coverage, but we're going to evaluate that and look at other options to see where we can get the most bang for our buck.
It makes sense. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager Reynoso. Additionally, just to reiterate, this is the last week that the library will be open for checkouts. So, I wanted to also thank you, Councilmember Parker, I believe it was, who suggested putting an insert in the water bill. We did go ahead and do that, so this was our lovely insert that went in. And we were also able to get into the Mountain View News this past weekend, so special thanks to Mountain View News for putting us in there. And we, this is our last week, so October 14th is not only the Fire Prevention Festival, but is also the last day to check out books, and we're asking everyone to help us out and check out anything you might be interested in. It'll be less things to have to put into storage, is our... [laughing] It'll be less things we'll have to consider, and we're hoping that the library will be able to be reopened at its temporary location, which is 350 West Sierra Madre Boulevard in December of this year. Other than that, we are very focused on our relocation at this time. But if you have any additional questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Do you still have any eclipse glasses left?
Yes!
Okay, thank you.
Please stop by the library and pick up your eclipse glasses for the solar eclipse that's happening, also on October 14th. There is a lot happening on, on October 14th, and we only have two programs that the library is involved. One is our Pumpkin Smash on Thursday, October 12th, which our mayor has already told you about. And we also have a craft it happening at the library on October 14th with UV beads, which are sunlight reactive beads. So, we have a fun little craft there, and that'll be it for us until December.
Can Councilmember Gosse and I come use those UV beads to tie some flies?
Probably.
Those are very attractive to the...
Are they?
Yes, they are.
That's fascinating.
Yes, please.
Did you want to announce more formally the amazing news that we got from the library board?
That, thank you very much, Mayor Protem Creves, for reminding me of that. The library did receive an extension on the $10 million targeted grant, so we now have the same expenditure date as our Building Forward Infrastructure Grant, so both grants need to be expended by March 31st, 2026. So, I was able to secure a 14-month extension.
I wanted to congratulate you on that.
Thank you.
We all know you worked very hard to, to secure that extension, and I'm, I'm happy to hear that Deputy Director Yanez is still full steam ahead and looking at our schedule, but we don't have to work at breakneck speed anymore, and, you know, that's when wheels fall off the cart, so we want to avoid that at all, all costs. So, thank you for that, and thank you for ordering such great signage at 350 West. It's, it looks great, it grabs your attention, and lets everybody, and I think our community know, if you, if you're just glancing, if you stop at that stop sign, hopefully everyone stops at that stop sign.
You made it first.
You could see that signage, it pops. Great job in choosing that. I don't know if you were, you had a hand in that, I'm sure you did, so great job in choosing that signage. I think it looks great for our community. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. We look forward to seeing you at the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure, I'll, I'll entertain some public comment on that presentation. Come on up, Mr. Gordon.
I'm just rather puzzled, because this was an update on progress, and under the consent items, number G, recommendation to reject all bids for Sierra Madre Construction Management Services for the library's meaningful improvement projects. That's kind of serious. I'm surprised it wasn't addressed in, in the report. It's an absolutely crucial role, construction management, and looking at the staff report, you only had two bids, and both of them have been rejected, so you have to go out and bid all again. Why is it we weren't able to get more and better bids? We may have an extension, which is very good to hear, because it's needed, but it is worrying about the level of project management. We weren't able to solicit really good construction management bids. So, I would urge council to look into it, and when a report is delivered about meaningful improvement progress, important matters like that are not excluded.
Thank you. Noted. Okay, moving on to our consent calendar. Madam City Clerk, will you please read the consent calendar by title only?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The City Council voted to pull Consent Item C to a date uncertain, and Consent Items remaining are six. A is consideration of Resolution 2365 approving certain, certain demands, and it is recommended that the City Council approve this resolution. Consent B is the consideration of award a bid to King Office Services for the moving and storage services of the existing library in an amount not to exceed $134,660. It is recommended that the City Council also approve this item. Consent Item D is the approval of, is approval of an instructional services agreement with Rio Hondo Community College, and it is recommended that the City Council authorize the city manager or his or her designate to enter into the agreement with Rio Hondo Community College on behalf of the Sierra Madre Fire Department. Consent Item E is the consideration of award a bid to Performance Pipeline Technologies for a water main lining project in an amount not to exceed $100... for a water main lining project in an amount not to exceed one hundred seven thousand, five hundred and fifty-two dollars, and it is recommended that the City Council award this construction contract Performance Pipeline Technologies. Consent Item F is the consideration to increase the amount of the agreement with I B Consulting LLC by five thousand dollars for the completion of the water and wastewater rate study. It is recommended that the City Council authorize the five thousand dollar extra expenditure. And lastly, item, Consent Item G is the recommendation to reject all bids for the Sierra Madre Construction Management Services for the library's meaningful improvement project. And as stated, the recommendation is to reject those bids. Mr. Mayor, this concludes the report.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Let's bring you back to council for questions on the consent calendar. Do we have any questions for item A?
Maybe.
I'll give you a second.
No.
That's a warrants. Item B?
Yes.
Please.
So I just had one question about the payment of fees under the, mainly related to the storage services. The staff report mentions that the half of the deposit of up to fifty percent is required at the time of the move and then full payment upon the conclusion of the move. Is that specific just for the portion of the fee attributable to the move? I assume we're not paying upfront for the storage.
It was my understanding, and this is something that we can still negotiate with this particular company, that we would pay somewhat upfront for the storage because it is a two-year contract with them.
I guess I would have expected like that to be over time, like while they're maintaining storage. I mean, I would, I'm not going to get into the weeds of that, but, but yeah, typically, I would think that just in case there's something went wrong, we would want the ability to still have some leverage in terms of payment.
That is a great point, Mayor Protem Krebs, and I appreciate it. And that is something that we can still discuss with them, because we are not currently in contract.
Great, thank you.
It's nice to have the contract attorney on council.
So I'll just add to it. I was also confused in the contract, the difference between the storage and the move, because there's the end date of the, of the contract was, looks like it was relative to the move and not the storage. So I didn't dig into the details of it, but it just makes sure that, to me, as long as we're clear of what the terms and conditions are for each of the parts of it, I think that's critical so there aren't any confusions later on where they go, whoa, the contract was over because we moved. And so that was, I couldn't track that very easily.
All right. Any more questions on item B? All right, item C has been pulled, or not pulled, but eliminated from the consent calendar. Item D, any questions on item D?
I had a couple of questions on it.
Please, Councilmember Lo.
I will wait for Chief Bartlett. Sorry, no rush. My question was, what do we currently do? Do we, do we pay for training through them? And then is this, are we anticipating a revenue by the split, the twenty-five percent split? That's my first question.
There is no cost to the city. We basically join in with Rio Hondo Community College through the state chancellor's office. And basically, what it is, is our, our members are enrolled into this community college where they obtain credits for their training to be put towards degrees if they, if they so see fit. But basically, what it is, is we are doing our everyday trainings, mandated trainings. And so there's a reimbursement component to it, basically where the college will get seventy-five percent and we get twenty-five percent from the, from the state. Our last check, we, was thirty-one thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars that was basic revenue that we put back into the general fund. So it kind of offsets the costs that we're going, we were putting into our training program.
Thank you. That answered all the questions.
Glad to be a first.
Great, thanks, Chief.
I think my question's a variation on that, and maybe it was already answered. My sense of this was that this, this was not necessarily going to increase training costs that we weren't already incurring, because you're providing this training, as you said, you know, currently, and maybe it would allow us to provide additional training, but that the split, the twenty-five percent split would, you know, more than offset any additional costs that we would incur for providing the additional training.
Absolutely. There is no additional cost to us. Again, it is a way for us to basically get revenues on the training we already do. From pulling hose, throwing ladders, to hazardous materials, to professional development. Whatever it is that we're seeking training, if it falls within the curriculum from the state college and the state board, it is reimbursable, and therefore, we get that twenty-five percent of it. And it, at this point, it pretty much doubled our current, the revenue was double what our current training budget is. So it does potentially allow us the opportunity to enhance our training budget, to further do professional development or seek some other specialized training, or even equipment.
And is providing the course credit to the personnel, is that a benefit that is present in many departments? Or is that something we can use to distinguish, you know, the opportunities that could be provided by our department?
At least in our local areas, there are a lot of departments that take advantage of instructional service agreements through different community colleges, whether it be East Los Angeles, or Rio Hondo, or maybe even Mount SAC. So it's, it's not necessarily a recruitment, even though I would love to say it is, recruitment or retention thing we can hang our hat on.
But at least we're then competitive with other...
Absolutely. We're doing as everybody else is.
Great, thank you.
Absolutely.
Any more questions for Chief while he's up here? We make you walk back and forth a couple more times.
No problem.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Okay, moving on. Any questions on item E? Item F? And finally, item G. Any questions on G?
I would like to, since we had a member, I understand why we have to reject it. But we'd have a member of the public ask why this took place. I think maybe we should get an explanation.
Yeah, when we come back to discussion, I had some discussion on that item, and I think that's a good idea, Councilmember Goss. So I'll also allow our city staff to, to comment on that, too. Yeah, thank you for that. I appreciate that. Okay, so let's bring it back to the public. Do we, I know we do, but do we have any comment cards on any items within the consent calendar, Madam City Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We did not receive any emails, but we do have a speaker card from Paul Hagan.
Do we, we have two for one, or is it, just want to make sure. Mr. Hagan, are you part of the group, okay, on item? Okay, so I just want the public to know that there's a group here, and I am not including their time introducing themselves as time on the clock, because they all could potentially speak, and they're gracious enough to have one prepared statement. So I'm going to let them introduce themselves off the clock, and then the clock will begin once that statement is being read. If that's, just wanted a full disclosure for the, for public to hear that. All right, please.
Hi, we're all residents of Upper Woodland Drive.
Ma'am, could you please speak into the microphone? This is televised. Thank you.
Hi, we're all residents of Upper Woodland Drive or Upper Woods Brookside. I'm Elizabeth Converse. I live at eight five one Woodland Drive.
Eddie Truman at eight five one Woodland Drive.
Janet Hagan, eight three two Woodland Drive.
Richard Correa, seven nine four Woodland Drive.
Brittany Harden, eight three eight Woodland Drive.
William Elwell, eight three eight Woodland Drive.
Thank you for the introductions. Mr. Hagan, welcome.
I'm Paul Hagan, eight three two Woodland Drive.
There's one more coming down.
Charlie Callen, I'm at seven 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 Brookside Lane.
All right, thank you.
And of course, this is the tip of the iceberg. Honorable Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members, and Jose, it's good to be here. We are disappointed in the contract up for consideration tonight. It does not include a permanent fix to the ongoing problem of water main leaks and temporary patches on Upper Woodland Drive above Sunnyside Lane to the dam. The continual leaks and terrible street condition on Upper Woodland detrimentally affect the residents of the twenty-five homes on Upper Woodland in Upper Brookside above the footbridge who use Woodland to enter and exit. We have had to endure continual water main leaks, road ruptures, and temporary patches. The constant leaks and temporary fixes on this one-tenth of a mile portion of Woodland, which include the city paying substantially overtime for fixing leaks on weekends and on the nights, are significant. Since two thousand and nineteen, Woodland Drive above Sunnyside Lane has had upwards of a hundred and twenty-five leaks to the water main. Scores of potholes and at least five long-term metal plates exist. This represents an average of around three monthly repairs over the last four years. Leaks go on for hours, and during the repair, road can be blocked for hours. Rust leaks into the, our water system affecting the water quality. And the water department crews who have fixed the leaks and patched Woodland work very hard, and we appreciate all of their efforts. Despite their hard work, the street is so uneven, rough and bumpy with temporary fixed potholes. And because portions of the road having been patched in the same spot multiple times, driving and walking up Woodland is dangerous and constitutes a dangerous condition for the public property that, that needs repair. This could include blocking, emergency vehicles getting in and out, because a lot of times the main that's been repaired is in the middle of the street, and the whole road needs to be blocked. And then, you know how FedEx and all the other deliveries are, we're really impacted by any kind of disturbance in the road. As we feel these negative impacts daily, we have watched other streets in town get repaired, some more than once. We asked the City Council to finally take action and effect a permanent fix of this water line leaks and then properly repave Woodland and up to the dam. We want to know how can we work together to make this happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hagan, and residents of Woodland and Brookside. Thank you. Madam City Clerk, any, any more comment cards?
Yes, we just received one from David Gordon.
I'd just like to express, again, worry about the library. I've been to the library meetings. And what worries me is that we have a very excellent librarian, and she's a librarian. And what we seem to be asking her to do is to be the project manager, to some extent, of a very large construction management project. And I just wonder whether sufficient resources have been allocated to the management of this project so it doesn't fall too much on the shoulders of an excellent librarian.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon. Madam City Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, there are no other speaker cards.
Thank you. Let's bring it back to council for discussion. We'll, real quickly, I guess, item A, item B, item D. Grab the, sorry, the agenda got, long, long calendar here. Item E? Maybe, maybe we could address the concerns of the residents. You know, we, what we typically do, as we all know in the council, is we, we set an annual water main project. A lot of times, it's contiguous, this year and last year, I believe. Well, this year, we're doing the downtown. Last year, we were hitting spots. I think we're looking about hitting spots again. So if I could have City Manager Reynoso just kind of elaborate on what the plan is and if we have a plan for, for Woodland or Brookside.
Thank you, Mayor. I want the residents of Woodland to know that I understand their situation very well. That is perhaps the most challenging water main project that we're going to undertake. We have two water mains there. There's a lot of rock, and it is on our priority list. We are scheduled to design that water main and replace it in the next fiscal year, and it is one of our priorities.
Thank you.
Could I follow that up?
Please.
What, in the next fiscal year or so, when do you think we would actually be starting work on it?
So I would assume it could go out to bid as soon as the budget is approved, July first. But if Director Semino's here, he could probably, he could probably...
We also have Supervisor McGee. Supervisor McGee is here as well. I think he's...
Good evening, everybody. As to concern, when we're talking about the water main, that's already happening up there. I know the questions were about that as well, too. That is a, that is a different technology and a different line. That is a low-flow tunnel line. So when we talk about redoing that line, that was part of an ongoing project we were already doing with the tunnels. It is a low-flow pressure line, so it is not a technology we can use on the distribution line that is already up there. We are in, before this happened, in the idea of putting together something for the Upper Woodland project up there. Director Semino is putting it in for July first of next year. When we do a water main here, we, once again, we do the priority main, regardless of how we feel what we think should be done. I mean, I know every one of these people that have come up here for the most part. I've been one of the guys digging in front of their house. So they know me probably better than I know some of my kids sometimes. But we do have to non-biasedly take the most priority main line, that is. And as where Mr. Hagan did point out, the several leaks that have been up there, the places that we've done in the, in the recent history are worse. So we do have to do the things that alleviate the town the best, and we have done that. This project is in the works. It will, we are prioritizing this to be the next project we do. The Boulevard had to be done as well. And just to give you an example, when you do a Boulevard project like we just did, somewhere in the eight-hundred-thousand-dollar range like that, will, Upper Woodland is going to cost us more. The idea up there is going to have to be a couple of different, maybe high lines that have to go up there. We have to coordinate with gas. We have to coordinate with county. The county bridge is not our bridge. We have to coordinate with them. As well as, it will be removing the main, not, not lining it, not doing anything like that, removing the main. There are huge boulders up there, and the contractors are aware of what's up there. We have to be, we have to give them that due diligence and let them know. And there were areas where we were doing fifteen feet a day when we did the lower parts. So all these factors have to come into hand, but we are, we are working on it.
Thank you for that, and I do appreciate you mentioning the distinction between the current project that's on the agenda item. And, but, you know, I can understand it being adjacent to the residents, how there is a concern, because I, I'm learning a lot about water, and I know that lining is not what they need there. And this is a water lining, pipeline, lining project rather than a main replacement. But I just want to say to the residents, we hear you. We, hopefully, you've heard how this works, and unfortunately, I know it's a huge inconvenience, but unfortunately, the way the budgetary process works is, in local government, is not quick. But we will make sure we prioritize all your concerns, obviously. And if there's anything we, we could do as a city, I know we cold patch everything. I don't know if hot patching or doing anything different. How, you know, then it's harder to get into the ground. I don't know if there's anything we can do to kind of alleviate the impact in the, in the interim while, while we're fixing leaks up there.
Yeah, well, we are going to do a better job of trying to get up there and do a hotter seal patch when we go to do those things. It's just very difficult, because if you do have that area, when water does leak, you do have, where, it doesn't just leak in that area right there. So sometimes you do have sinkage, so you can patch an area and it'll come right back in a different area. So we do our, we do our best we possibly can to do a temporary cold, but I do think the city, we can do a better job.
Thank you so much, Deputy, Deputy Director, Superintendent McGee, me in the titles.
Thank you.
Thank you. Director Semino?
Thank you. I just want to elaborate a little bit on this water lining project that we're going to do. We are going to call a community meeting up there. We've done it before when we worked on Sunnyside Lane and Brookside Lane. So we will be getting in touch with the residents up there, explaining the project. And then we'll also get into explaining what the next steps are and getting that water main replaced. It is a very difficult area. Before anybody starts up there, we have to evacuate the area. We have to make sure everybody's out, or... We have to make sure everybody's out, or there's access to them if they need medical help during the project, too. So there's a lot to coordinate here. We experienced it once before, it kind of taught us a lot. So in this, the next two projects we do up there, we will be well-prepared.
Thank you, Director Semino.
Thank you.
I just wanted to add, too, that I've noticed there's an increase in traffic, especially because Mary's Market has hit Instagram and TikTok. So you have a lot more people walking and hiking all around Brookside, Upper Brookside, Lower Middle, all the way up from Woodland, and doing like a loop around there, from Nature Friends and above. It's been highly trafficked, much more in the last couple of months.
I did notice that the last time I drove up in that neck of the woods, there were, there were people that were walking around, and they were kind of checking things out.
Like they're hiking, they're, it's neat.
Any more comments on that, that consent item? No? Okay. That was E, item F. And item G, I think we're going to have a few comments here. I'll just start, I think Councilman Gosse might want to speak, and we can hear from our city manager and/or our Director Semino. But the idea to have, potentially have a project manager on the library project was the brainchild of a resident and a couple residents meeting with me individually, in understanding the urgency and the importance, given the deadline that we had of January, January of two thousand and twenty-five, right? That was the original deadline. I'm assuming, and I can let the city manager expand, but when we went out to bid, the deadline was the previous deadline, not the extended deadline, and I think that had a huge impact. And I don't want to speak, because we are actually probing those that entertained the RFPs in the first place. It's my understanding that that short timeline made things nearly impossible, and if they were going to do this project, it would be the tune of millions of dollars for a project manager position for a year, which is obviously excessive for a town of our size and a project of that size. So I just want to hand it over to the city manager and see if he has anything to add to that. But it is important to myself as the mayor, and I believe this council, that we alleviate our Public Works Department to do the things that they typically do, and we have another professional step in to make sure this project is going forward in a, in a meaningful manner. So if you could expand.
Mayor, you explained it perfectly. And so we did reach out to a couple of the, the construction managers that we were hoping were going to submit a bid, and they stated exactly what you said, that the timeline, the one-year timeline was a constraint, and the one that submitted a bid did, in fact, state that the bid was higher than what they typically quote because of the shortened timeline. So with the added fourteen months, we're confident that we're going to get additional bids, and we have some interest from some additional construction managers in that timeline as well.
Yeah, I think it's important to note, for the public comment from Mr. Gordon, we are reopening the bidding process, given this new timeline. So it's not that we're abandoning this, this position. Now we can get a fresh look with more time from a project manager. So I think that's, that's important to note. And also, yeah, I do agree, it's important to hear that in the, in the update. It would have been nice to hear a little bit of that in the update, but, you know, we're learning as we go. So thank you for that comment. Anything else from the council?
Got it.
Please.
I'd just add, you know, I mean, this isn't the first time when we've had a challenge of getting organizations to bid, you know? And sometimes projects are that way. And so I really appreciate staff recognizing that not feeling handcuffed to say, we have to do this, and this is the only bid, is to have some courage to step up and say, you know what? We think we can do better. We think we can do better with our money and have better resources on it. So, you know, it's, I don't like rejecting the bids, but I think it's the right thing to do, and I appreciate the time and effort the staff has gone into really thinking through, making sure we, we address the budget, the scope, and the timeline.
It's my understanding, we had one bid rejecting one bid. I know the public commenter said two bids, but from what I recall, it was just one bid.
Correct.
Okay. All right. We satisfied? Okay. Moving on to the public hearing?
No, we have to actually approve.
Just to vote for it.
The longest, longest consent counter on record.
Sorry. And here I said, we had, we can, let's not move that discussion item ahead in the agenda.
I will make a motion to approve the consent counter as amended.
Second.
Thank you for the motion and the second. All those in favor? Aye. Carried unanimously. Forgot about that voting thing that we have to do up there. Okay, moving on to the public hearing. Okay, this is a consideration of an adoption of ordinance number fourteen sixty-nine, amending title fifteen dot two-four of the Sierra Module Municipal Code relating to the adoption and amendments to the two thousand and twenty-two California Fire Code and fire sprinkler requirements. I believe we have a presentation by Chief Bartlett once again.
Yes, sir.
Please. Welcome back.
Going to get my money's worth this evening.
Get your steps in.
Appreciate the time. Yes, we're bringing forth the urgency reading of ordinance fourteen sixty-nine amendments to the two thousand and twenty-two Fire Code. At the prior meeting, City Council meeting of October twenty-fifth of two thousand and twenty-two, City Council adopted ordinance, and I'd like for the record to note that there's a typo in my staff report, which I apologize. We adopted, at that time, ordinance fourteen sixty-three. My staff report reflects fourteen sixty-nine, which is the current ordinance that we're proposing. After the publication of that, of ordinance fourteen sixty-three, it was determined that, under that recent adoption, we had, we omitted historical language that related to the installation of residence, residential fire sprinklers. And the Fire Department would like to amend the ordinance to return that historical language for application for future construction projects. So basically, that is going to allow us to bring forth what we already had in place as it results to sprinklers of residential facility, or residential homes. And everything else will be intact. We're adopting the ordinance, ordinance as it was prior. We just want to get that language back in. Other than that, I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Let's bring it back to the council for questions on this, this item. Do we have any questions?
Does it have to be, because it's emergency, does it have to be read twice? Or is it, is an emergency read once and take immediate effect?
That's a great question. Either city clerk or city attorney?
Mr. Councilmember Parkhurst, urgency ordinances only need to be read once, and they go into effect immediately.
Great question. Thank you. Please.
So I think, I think you answered this. I just wanted to clarify. So this, what we're adding to fourteen sixty-three, and the listing in the staff report reflects what was in the, in the fire safety ordinance prior to the October two thousand and twenty-two
The attorney might be able to help me out on this one, but my, my understanding is what we're actually doing is bringing forth ordinance fourteen sixty-nine as a new ordinance to basically replace fourteen sixty-three, which will bring forth the historical language that we, we were not looking to remove.
Okay, I see. But I guess my question is, in substance, this fire sprinkler, or, you know, portion of the ordinance is just a reinstatement of the ordinance as it was prior to our action in October two thousand and twenty-two? So we're not making any other changes? We're just putting back in what was already there before?
What we are putting back in, the historical language, is the city or the local agency, which is ourselves, had the option to make things a little bit more stringent. We adopted the states, and then the local ordinances that were removed or omitted are that historical piece that we are, we are raising the bar a little bit as far as what our requirements are, and we want that back in.
And then my last question is, in the interim year, basically, have we had any projects that then were processed without these, these requirements because of the glitch in the, in the code?
Not to my knowledge, no. We have still stuck to, to the code as we've always known it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for staff?
So this is just a section four of section fifteen dot twenty-four dot one-ten is really where the changes are, right?
Correct. Yes, sir. And so basically, it is, there's, there's three bulleted items, and it's basically, "All newly constructed residential occupancies shall install an automatic life safety support sprinkler system as an integral aspect of their new construction. In addition, all residential occupancies being renovated over seventy percent of their existing square footage in a twelve-month period shall install a life safety support sprinkler system throughout the entire occupancy." And then finally, "All residential occupancies where in addition of fifty percent or more of the existing square footage in a twelve-month period shall install a life safety support sprinkler system throughout the entire occupancy." So that's the historical language that has been omitted, and we're seeking to get that back in under the new ordinance.
Thank you. I think our city attorney has a clarifying comment.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I know, I know the Fire Chief and I worked on this together. We had made some edits to the staff report, but I, I don't think some of those edits made it to this version of the ordinance. So I'd ask that if the City Council is going to make a motion that they amend section fourteen of the ordinance to state that the effective date is immediate upon adoption, and then also that a section nineteen be added that incorporates the urgency findings that are made in the staff report.
Section fourteen, what was the last section? Adding a nineteen?
Yeah, adding a new section nineteen at the end, and I believe that's the last.
And sorry, I was, I was writing while you stated what it, this is the urgency?
The urgency findings that are, that are contained in the staff report.
Thank you.
I have a question kind of concerning that timeline still, then if, let's say someone has a project out right now, and they already were given their permit according to our air, and not, we didn't have this, they don't have to change and automatically add sprinklers if they were making these changes within that lapse of time, do they?
Does that, does that go to Councilman McCree's question earlier, or is that?
Yeah, I think so, but that's more specific.
Yeah. Good question, yeah. I mean, it's my understanding, until the building permit is issued, whatever laws or pass are going to apply. So if this is amended today, and the building permit hasn't been issued.
But it's ret, not retro, is my question. Like, someone's in the middle, and they have their permit now, and all of a sudden we go back and say, oh, by the way, we updated our perm, our, our code. You already received your permit, so you're building to this level. But now do we go back and say, now you're required?
I, I, it's my understanding from the chief that the permit, no permits have been issued, that would have been impacted by this.
Okay. I missed that.
To concur with that, that is my understanding as well, is permits that have been issued have still fallen under the, the pre-existing and the soon-to-be amendments.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions for chief before we open the public hearing? Seem none? All right, I'd like to open the public hearing. Madam City Clerk, do we have any comments from the public?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No emails nor speaker cards were submitted on this public hearing.
Thank you. Going once, going twice, public hearing closed. Let's bring it back to the council for discussion. Do we have any things we want to discuss, or are we, do we have a motion ready?
I guess I just wanted to allow, or I will do it, to acknowledge Planner Wolf's recognition of this omission and bringing it forth, because it's obviously very important for our public safety. So I just wanted to give a kudos to him for realizing this and then bringing it to the attention of the council and staff.
Not the first time Planner Wolf has had a good catch. So, yeah, we appreciate his diligence. Thank you for that. Any more comments? Do we have a motion?
Move that we consider adoption of ordinance number fourteen sixty-nine.
Yes.
With the amendments that we were supposed to include in the report that we stated to title fifteen point two-four of the Sierra Module Municipal Code relating to the adoption and amendments of the two thousand and twenty-two California Fire Code and fire sprinkler requirements.
And before we, we vote, did that, did that motion include section four, amend section fourteen and adding section nineteen?
Yes.
Okay, just want to make sure. And we have a second? All those in favor? Aye. Carried unanimously.
Mr. Mayor, I missed a second.
Oh, that was Councilmember Gosse.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. That brings us to our one and only discussion item. We are going to have a presentation from the California Department of Fish and Wildlife.
Mayor, this will be a joint presentation by city staff and Department of Fish and Wildlife.
Mayor Protem, council members, thanks for having us today. I appreciate it. My name is Kevin Thomas. I'm the Deputy Director for Regional Operations for California Fish and Wildlife. My job is to oversee our seven regions across the state and make sure we're consistent among our efforts to manage fish and wildlife, in this case pertaining to bears for you guys. We have a few folks here today. Mackenzie Rich is going to be doing the presentation, and Tim Dillingham is here to answer questions as well. So I'm going to pass it off to Mackenzie, but we'll all be here to answer questions whenever we finish, okay?
I do appreciate you coming. Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Let me get up here and get this guy, so y'all can hear me, and the folks on the TV can hear me as well. So thank you, guys, for having us. I really appreciate y'all. For those of you who don't know me, my name's Mackenzie Rich. I'm a human wildlife conflict specialist with the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. Really fancy way of saying a biologist, whose goal is really to work with communities like yourselves and work proactively to prevent conflict before it happens, and then obviously be there and help manage it when it does happen. So really quick, just for folks to kind of get some, this is a joint presentation between us and some members of the City Council as well, city manager. So we're going to first talk about the California Department of Fish and Wildlife, who we are, who I am, kind of what our roles and goals are as a department. We're going to hand it off to police, so they can explain who they are and what their role is when it comes to managing wildlife and bears. And then obviously, there'll be time for public comment, questions, and discussion after. So the end game and the goal of this presentation, and really the goal of the collaboration between us all, is really to ensure public safety by working collaboratively between the city, the community, you guys out here and at home, as well as the CDFW, to really manage and reduce human wildlife conflict. So who we are as the California Department of Fish and Wildlife, we were founded in nineteen fifty-one as the California Department of Fish and Game. You might know of Fish and Game. If you call the Fish and Game, that's just fine. We know exactly who you're referring to. We really changed our name to reflect better what our goals and objectives were as an agency. So we are a regulatory and steward agency, so our goal is really to implement policy established by the Fish and Game Commission. And that goal is really to protect and maintain our healthy wildlife populations for the public, for recreational, commercial, scientific, educational use, really to have that land and resources available for folks. We are also the lead agency charged with managing and responding to human wildlife conflict. With that said, our Human Wildlife Conflicts Program, hi, I'm here, we're new. We were really established in the beginning of two thousand and twenty-two, and the goal was really to help CDFW statewide engage with folks and communities experiencing conflict. And so our goal is really to raise awareness of local wildlife. Our goal is to proactively prevent, monitor, and respond to conflict as it happens, and also promoting community behaviors that encourage coexistence. So we use outreach, hi, education, site visits, field responses, really encouraging the use of non-lethal deterrents and aversive conditioning techniques through both cities and communities, as well as us as the department. And we're also monitoring wildlife via telemetry and GPS technology. Now, of course, that is as those things are available. They're not easy to come by. But our goal is really to use those tools and techniques to learn how wildlife are utilizing those urban landscapes in areas where conflict is occurring, so that we can then adapt our management strategies and really tailor what we're responding to and how we're making those management decisions to the areas that are experiencing those levels of conflict in the community itself. Currently, you might have seen myself, Megan Senior here as well, or Amelia Vera, many of us out in the community. That's our bear trap we've got there that was actually taken in Sierra Module recently. So our goal right now is really, we're doing what we call a trap, tag, and monitor program. It used to be known as trap, tag, haze. We kind of switched things around to better reflect what we're actually doing and able to do. But the goal of this is really to get tags on bears and collars when available, so that we can understand bear behavior, and we can really figure out what bear is responsible for what actions. We never want to make a management action where we're pinning behaviors of one bear on another bear. And it also helps us to learn what's going on. So is it one bear that's really the trash can flipper? And it also helps us to learn what's going on. So is it one bear that's really the trash can flipper, right? That's the bear that's going home to home to home. Or is it six different bears? And so that's our goal is to really figure that out and learn what's going on and doing so by capturing, collaring, and tagging those animals. So there's us with one bear, we got a collar on that one. The other got two tags. One just quick note that I want to make so folks are aware is that you will see bears with two tags now moving forward. So that is not necessarily the bear got captured twice. Color system means absolutely nothing beyond that's the tag that I happened to pull out of my kit at that moment. And same thing with your tag placement and color. They'll get two tags. Again, it's not, there's no coding, there's no secret message being sent by a bear. It's just simply helping to better tag bears because if we've got twenty bears running around, there are only so many colors in the rainbow. And if a bear moves from one city to another, somebody reports it, oh, I saw a green tagged bear. Well, okay, we've got six of those. So it really just helps us understand what's going on. So just so you guys know, if you see tagged bears running around, that's what's going on. So we wanted to talk too about how to make a report to us as CDFW. And it's really, really important for members of the public to give us those reports, whether that's, hey, I saw a bear in my yard today, it was in my swimming pool. Or, you know, a bear was flipping over my trash can this morning. I left it out on trash morning, bear came by and, you know, did a little CPR maneuver, got the trash can open, and got the food. So it's really important that we have those data because those data inform management decisions ultimately, but they also just help us to get a feel of what's going on. A lot of times I'll be working with the public and communities saying, hey, you know, I had, you know, three neighbors that also had a bear in their pool and one had their refrigerator broken into, but if I don't have those reported to me, I have no way of knowing what's going on. We have three human wildlife conflict specialists for five counties and so we're really kind of spread thin over an area. And so without, we're not able to be in an area, right, all day, every day and really have our finger on the pulse. As much as that would be ultimately lovely and our goal, we just don't have the manpower to do so. So by having these reports given to us and the community, by the way, thank you all, you've been really great recently getting those reports to us and it's been very, very helpful. But having those data and those reports is really critical. So folks at home, take a screenshot. Folks here, feel free to take a grab of the screen if you have questions and didn't see it. More than happy to give you their website on its own. It's a little clunky. We're getting it updated soon, so just bear with us, we're getting there. So that kind of naturally leads to the question of how do we actually respond to reports, right? So like, okay, we've got the data, we've got the information, now what? So really depends. I know it's that scientific answer of it depends, but it's true. So we respond to reports of incidents both remotely and onsite. Really just depends on the context of what's happening in that specific incident, you know, what's going on? Was it a sighting? Was it something more serious? A bear is trying under a home? Again, what's our ability to respond? Am I down in Orange County dealing with a mountain lion right then and there and there's something that happens? Am I able to get up? Is it, you know, what's going on? So that really kind of depends. So a conflict bear is a bear that requires some action by the CDFW or members of the public due to its behavior or its situation. So this is including no harm, no foul, habituation, depredation, and public safety. And just a little quick quote here from our CDFW two thousand twenty-two bear policy. It just states that a range of types of conflict bears creates a range of possible management actions. So again, it truly depends on what's going on to determine how we will respond. Every situation, every single bear is different. No harm, no foul is, you know, typically we describe it as wrong place, wrong time, right? They're looking for food, they're not looking for confrontation, they're trying to get in our trash cans, maybe get into the quay pond to get some water. Typically, this is younger juvenile bears, you know, can the air bear walking down the street? Just typically giving these animals space and time to leave and honest, gracious, nine out of times, ten times, if not more, they will. They're not looking to interact with us. That's not the goal of a wild animal in this situation. They're just trying to either figure out where they're going, got a little lost, or they're just trying to move about the area again. So, you know, you can also haze or scare it away if you're thinking that, if you're kind of confident the bear has a good exit, you've got a good exit, you know, you're not going to haze it or scare it onto a busy road. Feel free to bang those pots and pans, get out that air horn, you know, wave your arms in the air, scream really loud, let your neighbors know the bear's in the area. They'll pick it up real quick. So, you know, that's another thing that can be done. Now, CDFW may move an animal near a suitable habitat, but typically we do that when the animal has no access to open space on its own. So this is an animal, the example I give is the bear that was on the two-ten freeway last year. You guys remember that? That's a bear that like, it was stuck. It could not get back to open space on its own. So we moved it then to nearest suitable habitat. General nuisance bears, habituated bears, these are bears that are accessing attractants, you know, around people using developed areas. But there's no extensive property damage or aggressive action towards a human. These are bears that are used to people. They've kind of lost that innate fear response. So habituated bear, and we'll talk about numbers and reports that came from the city in a minute, so we'll get into that, I promise y'all. But, you know, these are bears that it's a behavior thing, right? So to call a bear habituated, we have to be able to, one, individually identify that bear and, two, understand the context of its behavior, you know, is this a bear that was just in a trash can? Or was this a bear that was in a trash can, I yelled, I screamed, I waved, and it didn't move? It was like, you know, you're kind of scary, but this trash is really good. You had pizza for dinner last night, so I'm going to stay here. That's the context we're talking about. So it's really important for us to call something habituated that we can, again, identify that animal, have context. Typically here, we recommend folks remove or prevent access to attractants. You know, these are things on our landscapes, our properties, ripe and fallen fruit. Trash cans that aren't properly secured either in a garage or building or in bear resistant bins like you guys have the example up here. This is, you know, quay ponds or fountains that aren't properly secured or, you know, they're just available on the landscape free willy-nilly for animals. And they're going to take advantage of those things, you know, leaving our doors and windows open when it's a nice spring day and we're not in that room. We think, oh, I'm just going to go for a second or I'm just going to go across the street, talk to my neighbor. But that's all it takes, right, is that door or window being left open and then they're able to access the attractants in our home. So it's really, really important that to respond to these bears, which are often what we see in communities at this point, that we're managing those attractants. This point, we also recommend hazing and deterrents. Deterrents can be things like motion activated lights, sounds, sprinklers, you know, every animal is different though and it really depends on how to respond with what your bear or the animal that you're dealing with responds to. I know certain bears that ab cannot stand water. Somebody has a motion activated sprinkler and that bear is out of there, cannot stand it. Other bears think, thank you, I was so hot. Oh my gracious, it feels so nice. So again, it really depends on your individual animal and if anybody's curious, we're always happy as a department to chat with folks. We can set up meetings with you guys as well, kind of what those things are, different deterrents, what we found to be effective, what we found to not be effective. So again, everything's different. And then hazing, again, yelling, screaming, banging pots and pans. Anything to teach that animal to give it some kind of negative experience. So yeah, got the pizza out of the trash can, but there's been some sort of negative association. It's not all a pleasant experience and nights in home for that animal. Depredation bears are kind of, you could say leveled up habituated bears. So most bears in communities are habituated, but not all depredation bears are habituated bears. Complicated. But these bears are threatening to damaging or actively destroying property, right? So at this point, these are bears where typical hazing may no longer be effective. They are really, ooh, pardon me, really keyed in on that resource and they're really trying to get to that. So typically we recommend more advanced deterrents, more advanced hazing, typically like what police do with the capsaicin pellets or we do with powder balls, things like that, where it's just kind of leveling up that aversive conditioning or deterrent. So if there's been property damage, lethal permits can be requested by the public and issued by CDFW to the property owner. However, one thing we want to note, number one, is that the property owner is the one responsible for taking the bear. So you have a tree fall in your yard, you don't call Cal Fire to remove that tree, right? There's an act of nature, it's happened, but it's the property owner's responsibility to remove that. So after a CDFW, so myself, another colleague of mine comes and verifies, yep, that's damaged, yep, that's done by a bear. Then if all other non-lethal options have been exhausted and all, you know, we can issue a permit. But with that said, all local firearms ordinances have to be obeyed. And that's typically in our foothill communities, including Sierra Madre, that's where things become difficult. So, you know, we don't have a license with a USD trapper in LA County who could take the bear. I'm not personally of anywhere aware of any trapper that is able to in LA County. I'd be happy to be proven wrong, but I'm not currently aware of anyone. So again, that's, the take becomes the difficult part. It's not necessarily issuing the depredation permit, it's actually having that permit fulfilled. Moving on really quick to public safety incidents, so this is a CDFW definition from our policy. So, you know, and how our law enforcement determines that public safety animal. So this is a bear that's made physical contact with a person or presents an immediate threat to public health and safety. So what we mean by that immediate threat is that a bear exhibits one or more aggressive behaviors towards a person that is not reasonably due to the circumstances surrounding that. So if somebody's like cornering a bear and walking them into a corner and the bear is like, you know, bluff charging or stomping or something, I can reasonably say that that's because the person is cornering the bear and that just kind of moving off and letting the bear leave is more than likely going to solve that situation. But again, only law enforcement personnel can determine what an immediate threat is. So I, as a biologist, am not able to make that determination. That can only be by law enforcement. But it's also important to note that people live in recreative bear habitat every day without incident. You know, it's not very frequent. Again, not saying it doesn't happen, but it's not a very frequent thing. So law enforcement personnel that can determine a public safety incident includes CDFW wildlife officers, so our wardens, local sheriffs, police, park rangers, or Forest Service in general. And when in doubt, best thing to do is call nine-one-one. Just call local police. If you're concerned, then it might be public safety. Don't try to sit there and try to term it out and fish, okay, well, it's doing this, it's doing that. Best thing to do is call local PD and PD will contact us. If it's something that they are not able to respond to or they can't, they'll reach out to us and then we'll kind of manage that situation from there. But with that, I really appreciate y'all's time tonight. You've been so very kind and gracious. Thank you all in the audience as well. And I'm going to hand it off to Chief and we'll get started on their part of the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem and City Council. So what I'm going to, we're here to discuss is bears, bear concerns from the community. What our part is as a police department, as a city, I think collectively, we all have a piece to resolve or minimize some of these conflicts with bears. So I'm going to go over briefly over the Sierra Madre, the police bear protocol of when we respond to bear calls for service. Okay, first and foremost, anytime there's any aggressive bear or a bear that displays aggressive behavior to a human being or a domestic animal, we respond to that call. If a bear is attempting or has entered a residence or a structure, meaning a garage or shed, anything of that sort, we will respond to that call. And anytime we respond, we make an assessment and based on our assessment is whether we use any sort of less lethal ammunition to deter the bear. Any bear that's in any backyard of a resident and poses a public safety threat. Kids playing in the backyard, you're barbecuing, you're in the pool, it's very subjective, it's what you perceive to be that public threat. We will respond. You're scared, we will respond. Bear is walking towards a score heavily populated area. Walking over to any of the elementary, high schools, cursing court, any in that direction, we will take enforcement action. We will monitor the bear and take any action necessary. And then lastly, a bear that is a continuous nuisance, nuisance ranging through trash bins, living at or returning to the same location, or there is property damage. So I was asked today again, how do we report these incidents? If it's an imminent threat and you feel it's a threat based on your own assessment, we will respond as a police department. Okay? That's the bottom line. Okay, I'm going to go over real quick over the policy. Basically what the policy is, is our priority is public safety and it's human life. That's our primary responsibility. Second, it would be to humanely address the bear in any manner possible. So less, using less ammunition, less lethal munition, hazing, or last resort would be the destruction of the animal. We do have the authority to destroy an animal. However, if you read, we can use our firearm only if it's imminent. So it's got to be posing an imminent threat to a human being for us to take action. Okay? Here, I'm going to provide you with some historical data of Sierra Madre calls. Don't get alarmed, I know the charts look a little ugly. So if you look at January, February, March, and April, it's pretty even across the board as far as calls for service regarding bears. If you look at May, May is when we start seeing an uptick into May into June. May is where we started our campaign to, for public education on living with wildlife. We also posted on our social media to have all citizens call the PD with any bear-related calls. So that's why you see the huge spike. I know it may seem ugly, you know, you go from twelve to seventy-nine, two thousand twenty-two compared to two thousand twenty-three, and then fifteen to eighty-five July, and then you see another spike, eleven to sixty-seven calls. I think when you compare two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-three, I think the reason is we're getting more reportings now in two thousand twenty-three than we did in two thousand twenty-two. I know it looks like we're probably at three hundred percent increase or so, but that's not the case. I know in two thousand twenty, we had ninety-eight bear-related calls. Two thousand twenty-one, we had a hundred and three related calls. Two thousand twenty-six, a hundred and twenty, twenty-two, a hundred and twenty-six, and now we're at three fifty-nine. Reported calls year-to-date. Intrusions, we had nineteen, two thousand twenty-two. Currently, we're at fifty-three. So this is the Sierra Madre bear conflicts by type. You could see no harm, no foul. Most of our calls are no harm, no foul. Bear seen, really not doing a whole lot. Walking through somebody's backyard, sidewalk, on a tree. And then we have the conflict bear that Mackenzie talked about. Depredation, zero. Public says that we had one incident year-to-date where a bear injured a person. So we've had one incident in two thousand twenty-three. I'm going to turn it over back to Mackenzie.
Thanks, y'all. So just going back to this previous slide really quick to provide some CDFW context as well. Chief, you did a wonderful job. Thank you all so much. So providing some context here, you know, again, the numbers are higher, but once again, we had the increased reporting, which again, has been wonderful. Thank you guys so much for reporting those things. It's really genuinely helpful for us. Just pointing out too, that the ratio of calls to types, so conflict bear to no harm, no foul, we're looking at a sixty, forty both years, roughly speaking. I think there's like a four percent difference, you know. But again, it's mostly the same ratio that we're seeing, it's just simply that increase in types. And also just for context, again, our depredation bears, for us to call it a depredation bear under the CDFW policy, a permit has to be requested. So property damage can occur, so we lumped property damage under conflict bear for the slides. So we took the numbers that Chief was also been provided for us. We kind of then went through and lumped them under how does CDFW, you know, define this, what type of bear would we call this? So again, because no depredation permit has been requested, that's why there's no depredation bears on there. Does not mean that there's not been property damage, just means we can't classify it as a depredation bear under the policy. So that's why it's kind of popped into conflict bear. Same thing with habituated. So I, again, I'm not saying there aren't habituated bears in Sierra Madre, but just, you know, having the report and it was bear in trash can. For me, as a biologist and as the department, there's not enough context to that report to really be able to accurately classify that under habituated bear. So again, it's not saying they're not there. We're just for now putting them under conflict bear where it's that general heading that encompasses all of these other things as well. So hopefully that makes sense, but we have a question and answer session, so if folks want a little more information on how we kind of went through, more than happy to provide that. So just wanted to quickly show bear wildlife incident reports in Los Angeles County. This is relatively recent chart, I think it's from, yeah, two thousand twenty-three, May this year. So just showing you guys, you know, I know we live in our communities and you guys have such a wonderful community here where you guys have such great people around. And so it feels like, you know, right now, this is the only area, like I am just seeing bears every day. It feels very, you know, insular to you. There is conflict with bears similar to what Sierra Madre is experiencing across the two-ten-foot hill corridor, if I can speak English tonight. So there's conflict that's being experienced across the area. So it's not just y'all, there's bear conflict occurring and it's really up to us as communities to try to work to prevent it. But that's why we're here tonight. That's why we've been having meetings with representatives from y'all's city. That's why we've been meeting and talking with you guys is because we're here to work on this together. That's the really thing. That's how we prevent conflict. That's how we reduce conflict is by working together as a team. So just again, well, I just said what I just said, but there's a slide that goes over it. Again, it's a community effort, it's a city effort, it's a CDFW effort for this. And so I'm going to, once again, switch it right back. Oh, James is going to talk to you now.
Great, thank you. Thank you very much, Mackenzie, again. I thought it was important for this presentation to close the loop and give you guys an idea of what our end game is, what our goals really are. There's going to be a number of things we continue to do, things that we've learned from fish and wildlife, things that we've learned out in the area, things we've learned by talking to our stakeholders and partners. Responsible hazing, again, I want to start using the word responsible. Responsible hazing. Again, I want to start using the word responsible hazing. The mayor's mentioned a number of times where yelling at a bear and having a bear leave your property in the wrong direction is not going to be a benefit to us going forward. So it's important to be responsible when you're hazing, know your, know your surroundings. Feeding of wildlife is prohibited. We are still getting anonymous reports of blatant feeding. And in fact, our wildlife at cityofsierra moderate dot com has proven to be a really good, um, way to anonymously report something to that effect. We send our code enforcement out. Um, the email is also good for us when people want to attach videos or pictures. So that's what we're finding with that one email, but we are still going to actively enforce that prohibition on active, on feeding wildlife. And then with the Department of Fish and Wildlife, we're going to continue with our education. We're going to continue with our advocacy to our, our, our friends up in Sacramento. We're seeking our partnerships. A lot of the foothill community cities we are in discussion with. And we're also going to be as transparent to what we're doing and what our goals and what our efforts are going to be going forward. Part of our end game and part of our goal is to eliminate the unnatural sources of food, and you're going to see a big step coming with our, our bear-resistant cans coming down the line. It is a end game. It is a goal. It is a hope. It's not a guarantee that these bears will go back to their opportunistic feeding habits and return to a natural feeding diet. And we wanted to make sure that people are aware that this is the tough time. This is, uh, when they are really fattening up for the next few months. And, uh, so we want to make sure people are aware of hi- hyperphalgia. Just, uh, yeah, thanks. Um, just another quick review. Um, we do have a wildlife management plan. It was created by our Natural Resources Commission. Um, and it can be updated going forward as much as needed. Included within the wildlife management plan is the prohibition on feeding wildlife, is the acquisition of the bear-resistant cans, and a continuous effort for education and outreach. I've also listed a number of areas where we have, um, done, reached out, you know, there's social media, um, the National Night Out and the, uh, the Fish and Wildlife booth was really popular. The library meetings, council meetings such as this, neighborhood watch meetings, I believe, are going to be, um, enhanced going forward. We did a really good one at the Rotary Club just last week. We have community policing. The Chief Barrientos can add some more information to that if you have a question. Zoom was really important for us during the COVID years when we were able to have these meetings, um, uh, online. We're still going to continue to partner with Fish and Wildlife to provide the, the energy, the, the community with this education. And SMPD will continue to work with reporting and, and, uh, other tasks with California Fish and Wildlife. New prob- programs in development. The Fish and Wildlife Department is going to provide specific training to our police staff and enhance what they can do with the wildlife. We're, we're looking for a wildlife watch program, and that has been something that was in our wildlife management plan that we were hoping to connect to our traditional neighborhood watch program. So that's something that we're still going to have to think about how it's going to work the best way. But, um, we still have that opportunity and we want our, our communities to be able to, to contribute to our efforts here. Provide assistance to develop sustainable solutions. Implement the trap, tag, and monitor program that, uh, that was just mentioned. And then as much as possible, possible, we place the ear tags in the collars for our data collection and identification purposes. And with that, we will turn now to questions from the City Council, and then we'll progress through the normal discussion where we open up for public comment. We will come back to the council for closure. And I want to thank Department of Fish and Wildlife very much for coming here tonight.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Rich, for the presentation, Chief Barrientos and, uh, Management Analyst Carlson. I just want to, um, inform everybody, even, even though sitting at the desk with me, um, of how I envisioning this, this happening. So we typically will have council questions, and then we'll have responses, and then we go to public comment, and then we discuss. That's what we typically do. Um, I want the council to feel free after public comment to then follow up with more questions if you deem appropriate, um, after hearing some public comments. So, um, keep that in mind. I didn't share that with any of you. Um, so I want to make sure that, um, you have the freedom to do that. Um, and then we, we can then kind of fold in discussion and questions, the, the extra questions, which are then, uh, possibly prompted by the residents. Um, and just a reminder to residents, this isn't a typical meeting with Fish and Wildlife where it is a Q and A with the department. This is a council meeting. Um, so we're listening to your public comment. We're ingesting that, and our policies that we take forward will be based partly on, um, your comments. As I, as I said earlier, uh, we take those things seriously. We, we pay attention to those. So, um, again, be fair. Um, some, some people are very passionate about this issue. So, um, it'd be a shame if you disagreed with somebody and you booed them, and then you're the one, you, you turned into the bad guy and I have to ask you to leave, right? So, um, let's not boo or clap. Let's, uh, let everybody have their free speech today, and, um, hopefully we can, uh, we can go forward in that, in that manner. All right, um, with that, let's break it back to camp, bring it back to council with questions. I know I have quite a few and I'm sure everybody does. So who'd like to start? I'll start with, with Councilmember Lowe. How's that?
All right. So a couple of questions. If we, if we're looking at the chart that compares the 2022 to 2023 bear, um, by type, and we're only designating it by the no harm, no foul, and the conflict bear, but we're not, you know, relating that to the depredation, I understand that why. Wouldn't we therefore re-designate the types of bears? I know we've already designated them over the last presentations we've seen in the last three years or so. But if we have the conflict bear, the habituated bear, but we don't include them into data, and the main purpose is to collect data so that we can see what we're dealing with, shouldn't we change how we delineate the type of bear and their actions based on what, what actions you are therefore taking or we're taking? Because otherwise, it looks on paper under the data collection that we're only getting this type of bear. We're not having depredation bear. So shouldn't we recalculate that because maybe make it a damaging bear instead of a depredation bear? Do you see what I mean? Should we ask all questions or?
Yeah, so I, in, and I, I think, and I'm not trying to expand on your question, I, I, but, um, maybe I am. So this might be a question for Chief. I mean, tho- tho- those were the, the numbers, uh, provided by staff, which is our own police department. And I'm not sure that, and I, if, Chief, if you could answer this. I think we're, for purpose of this presentation, we were grouping, but in my understanding, Chief, you're, you are giving specific incident reports to CDFW, um, and you, you actually have specific numbers to incidents rather than in those four groups, right? Is that, that's my understanding, so?
Actually, it says right there that's found also in their, in their data.
Oh, there's a footnote.
Yes, because they've gone, they've gone on a lot of those calls as well. And I believe they have the, the police reports as well as, and we've seen the police reports as well as your reports.
So we, we do provide data. Now, we're providing data on a weekly basis to California Fish and Wildlife. Anytime we have an intrusion, that same day, we provide the cat event and photographs or videos that are sent to, uh, McKenzie for review. So yes, we're, we're, we're keeping, uh, data weekly that we submit, and then daily, if there's an intrusion. How we categorize those four, we're categorizing them equally to how Fish and Wildlife categorizes them.
So I, I think to expand it, I, I want everybody to get a chance, but we're talking 53 entrants, uh, into, but we're seeing 97 as a conflict bear. So I, I know we're kind of using different types of categories here, so I want to make sure that the public and, and even frankly, me, uh, we understand, um, the different classifications that we're.
Correction. So under those, uh, the 97, of those 97, 53, those documented there are going to be attempts or entries into a structure or a residence of the 97.
So what would the other 44 be?
Forty-four. The other 44 would be conflict bears.
And what, what, what type of event would, thank you.
McKenzie can elaborate a little more.
And I'm sorry to, I'm stealing your time here.
That's part of my question, which I'm hoping, I'm sure she understands, right? She was like, why are we?
Always speaking of the microphone because it's televised. Thank you.
Got you, friend. Well, look, you want me to mic up, I'll mic up. So, so really, I totally get your question. We're just caught, like, because these are the policy, like the CDFW 2022 policy, that's we've classified them under here. Now, you know, when we're talking about how we're looking at them, we can definitely look at them differently, like, for, just like you said, a home entry, a thing, or what have you. So the other, math is hard. Whatever the other percentage of, the other 50%, let's say, of those, those entries, roughly speaking, right? Those aren't, you know, things like, you know, a bear in a pond or a pool, or a bear on a trash can. So those are, are things that are still conflict, right? There's still some sort of action that's required by the public or us, the CDFW, or, you know, council, or whoever. Um, there's some sort of action that's required, and so there's still conflict bears, but that's what the other proportion of that, so like, you know, roughly 50% entries. And then the way that y'all classify home entry is a little different than what, so for you guys, it's a bear in a garage, a bear on a crawl space, or a bear in a home. So I'd say there's a portion of those, I, I don't want to speak to numbers because I, I don't have them in front of me. But there was a portion of those that were, you know, I left my garage door open, I, you know, was taking the groceries in, bear just helped itself to the refrigerator, things like that, rather than a bear actively, you know, pulled the screen off and got into the home. And there were definitely, pardon, there were definitely those as well. So if that's helpful for how that's classified and why the data are shown in this way, if that answers your question?
Yes.
Awesome. Great.
And then, um, thank you so much.
Got you.
Um, and then the other question I have is, so what do we do in July 2024 if the position that you hold is not funded? What, who do we call? Who's responding? Do we have a response? Kind of freaking us out because they're going to go to sleep, right? They're going to take a nice nap, and then we won't have any interaction. They're going to wake up, and then we're like, oh, oh.
So, as you're aware, clearly, uh, most of our conflict staff across the entire state, not just in this area, on our, our unlimited term funding that runs out at the end of this fiscal year for us. Part of the data that was shown up there is what the state uses to go try to get money from the legislature to provide those resources permanently. So all of these, um, reports through the WER system that you give us, all of the work with the PD, all of that feeds into our going to the legislature and saying, this is how big of an issue this is. This is why we need these resources. Now, um, I didn't explain too much about myself. I'm from Region Two, which is up in the Lake Tahoe area. That's where I've worked my whole entire career. So I have a lot of experience with bears up there. Very similar situation. We took what was a couple of years' worth of information, showed the issue to the legislature, and were able to get some permanent resources up there to deal with it. So that's really what we're going for here. And what we need the public's help with, we can't collect all this information ourself. And the more you give us, the more it makes the case that I can get resources to bring down here to, to solve the problem for you guys.
And you saw that the Assembly Member, head of the Appropriations Committee, was here tonight?
Yes, and I, I talked to the Assembly Member on his way out, so yes. And we've been in contact, uh, with, uh, Timmy in his office and the Assembly Member, um, and that's exactly us, how these things work. So that's why I'm here. I'm the liaison from Sacramento to here to coordinate and get resources and make that stuff happen.
And you also have our supervisor, um, representative, as well as Senator Portatino's representative as well.
Nice to meet you, Supervisor. Awesome. Thank you. Happy to talk afterwards if you want.
All right. I think that's it.
Okay. Let's just go on down the line.
All right. Um, so, um, according to a 2005 article, the estimated population of bears in San Gabriel Mountains was 250 to 300 bears. So I, I'm trying to, you know, I'm trying to wrap my head around, you know, we've, we've heard the numbers are between, what, three square miles, 11 square miles of, uh, of, of area. Has the number changed since 2005? Do we have any data on it? Do we know what the carrying capacity is, uh, of this area? Like, how many bears could actually, we, there was a lot of dots on that, that, that graph up there. And I recognize that, you know, that each of those dots is not a bear. But it's a, it's a bear reporting. Uh, but is there any, um, further research that's gone on and on like, how many bears can we have? And how many bears should, should, i- is, could exist in the San Gabriel Mountains?
I'll pass it to McKenzie. I'm going to take a liberty and play scientist for some, some time here because I used to be one. So there's a couple of things I'll tell you, again, on the data collection. Part of what we're doing is genetic analysis where we're asking people and collecting genetic samples from houses so that we can build a genetic structure of the population in the area. And that'll immediately tell us how many bears there are. We just have to get enough samples, look at related families, fathers, sons, mothers, daughters, and you can piece together what the whole population is for an area. As to if the numbers changed, I'll let McKenzie answer that. I'm, I'm not really sure. But when you ask about carrying capacity, it's an interesting one because the learned behaviors that create habituated bears alter what your carrying capacity is. Once they start going for trash, you increase their caloric intake, you increase their ability to reproduce. So you're actually increasing the carrying capacity of an area when you allow them to do that. So it goes back to preventing them from doing it, and you reach the carrying capacity of the natural world around you without the influence of those artificial food sources.
So, so just to stress that, because there is the science backing that up, that I found is, yes, smaller range of sizes, increased litter size, and the one that, that disturbs me even more is increased cub survival. So, so as we're getting more of them in the urbanized area, the, the, we're, the problem gets even more acute because the, the, you get more population in a denser area.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll jump back to Lake Tahoe for a second. One of the things we've noticed over the last 20 years is, is females now have three to four cubs that are surviving a year, which is much higher than normal, too, is normal for, for a black bear. And then also, they're in, in Lake Tahoe, right? Heavy snowpack, freezing cold winters, they're staying out all winter long. They're not even hibernating anymore. They're staying out all winter long in the city. And so these are the behaviors that, um, we're playing catch-up on there now. I think we're in a situation here where we can actually prevent it and stop it from happening before it gets to that point. So, uh, and then I'll let McKenzie answer any more about the carrying.
I know. It's, we're trying to figure it out, friends. We're playing musical chairs here. So with regards to the cub survival, I'll just speak to that in this area, too. So typically what we're seeing right now that I'm getting reports of is, is two cubs per female. Sometimes it's, you know, start the season with two and unfortunately end up with one. I know one female, to my knowledge personally, that had three cubs. There are no longer three cubs with her. I think there, she's down to one. So, you know, just like Kevin was saying, we're not, I don't think we're quite there yet. We're not seeing the three to four cubs on average. It's not, you know, yes, you do have increased survival, you know, and bears do have resource-dependent reproduction, so they are, you know, females that are fatter, have more fat resources, are having, you know, larger litters, they're able to provide food at a different level and urban landscapes to their cubs than they are in the wild. So, you know, there's all sorts of things to think about there with that. Regarding the population, we do know that statewide, the population of bears is increasing, so it's reasonable to expect that there are more than, you know, the 250 to 300 bears that were estimated in 2005. There's a lot of things, though, that have changed across the landscape, too, just between 2005 and now, especially in our foothill communities. We've seen a lot of growth in these communities. People are pushing a little bit higher into the, you know, called, what, wild in the area. We do live in the wild and urban interface. So, you know, there, there's a reason to expect that it's a possibility. Just like Kevin said, we're working on getting those data. So we have a study right now. Amelia Vera, who's our unit biologist for the area, is currently running a bear genetic collection, um, in the hills. So she's got a site, and she's got herself, and some of us complex specialists on occasion, going out, collecting hair from hair snatchers to, again, try to get those data, to try to figure out just how many bears we have running around. The issue with scientific research is that it is a long and arduous process. It takes a long time to gather sufficient data to actually be able to say something is statistically significant or not. I have my master's degree. I've done research, a lot of research in the past. It just takes time, and so that's kind of the limiting factor right now, but we are working on figuring that out because it is important for us to make management decisions, you know, for areas. So it is really important to us, and we're working on it right now. So I hope, I guess that answered your question.
Let me, let me expand a little bit. It did answer it. So, so two questions. So one, I mean, is there a level that, that is acceptable, a population that's acceptable? Maybe this goes to the police department, a number of home intrusions that are acceptable. I mean, from my perspective, that should be zero, but maybe, maybe we need, because we're in the wooie, uh, the role, the wild, urban interface, that we should expect some inter- interaction with bears? But, you know, what is, what is that right level? And then is there a risk analysis? Like, if you look at other things, when you look at, at, um, hazards, you, you do a type of hazard risk analysis, it's a standard kind of methodology. Is there a hazard risk analysis that's done with human wildlife interactions and to assess at what point are you getting critical in, in the impact and? And to assess at what point are you getting critical in, in the impact, and, and critical in the dangers and the damage, that you say, well, now we're gonna escalate to a higher level?
I think that's a great question. I think that's a wonderful question for Kevin or Tim to answer. Great one, I'm gonna hand it off to either side.
Uh, I'll answer, uh, to the best I can. Uh, as McKenzie stated, collecting this information takes a long time to be able to look at patterns and to find, um, how you can deal with those situations. Our conflict staff is at its infancy in being able to collect and make those determinations. Um, I don't think there's a specific, um, hazard analysis that says if you have three hundred bears, you can have this many incidents, and that's okay. Because that's not really what it's about. It's about the behavior that their bears displaying, and whether you can stop that behavior or not. Because a wild bear is fine, no matter if it's at carrying capacity or, or what. And it's the behavior of when it decides that it's gonna come into the town, eat the garbage, sit in the front yard, sit in someone's swing, go take a dip in the pool. That's the point, that it becomes an issue, not the carrying capacity of the population, or any of that stuff. Um, to get to what McKenzie said about encroaching into space, um, there's no doubt, if you look around California, that we are squeezing our wild areas further and further as we have growth. That's just the fact and the reality of what we deal with. And as we're doing that, these animals have less and less places to go. So, they either shrink in population, or they adapt and start developing behavior, I appreciate it, um, to deal with that, and that's, that's what ends up happening. So, you have both situations where populations will expand or, or grow in areas where they develop those habits, and it's not deterred. And you have areas where it is deterred, and populations remain, you know, out in the wild, and don't come to that point. Um, and you guys are kind of right at that interface right now, where you've got an influx of stuff happening in the city, which means those bears are starting to learn that behavior. And if they pass it down generation to generation, it gets really hard to break after that. That's the hardest part.
That's, that's what worries me the most. Um, so, you know, two kind of related questions to that, then. So, you, we, we heard you say that there's conflict across the two-ten area, that there's a lot of, of conflict there. But, you know, in talking with, with people in, um, Monrovia and in Pasadena, and, you know, the only other city along the two-ten that we've heard that has, has issues are, is, I can't remember if it's La Crenta or La, Canyada, Flint, Flint Ridge. It's one of the two of them that have had some, some bear interfaces, but we're not hearing it from anybody else. They're like, this is your problem, Sierra Madre, it's, it, it's unique to us. Are, are you getting calls from other cities and, and call, and, and is it just not getting up to the council? Or, like, what, what's the, McKenzie's nodding her head there, so...
I'll just tell you, from my, I, you know, I don't work down here, and McKenzie could fill in. When I talked to Assembly Member Holden on the way out, he said, yeah, five years ago, I had to call you about Monrovia, so why is it over here now? So, yes, it is. But McKenzie could fill in a little more.
Yeah, I'm, I'm the, I'm that person. So, I'm the one getting all the, the calls and reports, as is Rebecca and Megan, who's here with me as well. So, we are getting a lot of reports. I've recently had an uptick in reports in Alstina. You know, it's, it's just, every city's different. Every city, you know, wild animals are gonna behave differently. Sometimes communities, I don't want to say accept it, but they'll just, you know, oh, yeah, bear got into my trash can, and what have you, and for them, that's, you know, unacceptable. Not good, bad, or ugly, just it is what it is. And so, I think the, you know, the dialogue around the conflict can be different in different communities, too. It's, you know, what are you experiencing? What is your community accepting or not accepting, or, or finds, you know, disturbing or concerning? You know, so we are getting a lot of reports from other communities. I have, I was in Monrovia for a site visit the other day, saw two untagged bears within twenty minutes. So, you know, there are bears that are in other communities just as much as they are here. I think the, the home entries recently were, were primarily in this area, not that I haven't had home entries in other areas, um, but those, and I think that that's been kind of shifting the dialogue a little bit, is, is we're seeing that, and they're extrapolating into, you know, this is the, the primary area that's experiencing bears, period. But there's bear activity across the two-ten foothill quarter, it keeps me very busy. So, can confirm, it is, it is there as well. But thank you, Robert, for that question, really appreciate it, y'all.
Can I ask a really quick follow-up question?
Sure.
Would it behoove fish and wildlife, then, if all the cities in the San Gabriel Valley had a similar policy and reporting availability, such as we do, because we've had this problem, so that it would be more consistent for your reporting? Would it behoove you if we went to the other cities and asked them to adopt same type of policy?
So, that's exactly why I stood up, is because that was what I wanted to say. So, if you look at that two-ten block, if you look at the various cities, and the county even is involved in this, the one thing that moves animals around is inconsistency in the rules and regulations that are applied. So, if you have a trash ordinance, next city over doesn't, yours works great. They all of a sudden have all the calls, and I'm standing in front of them. So, the best thing to do is to try to work collaboratively among that whole baseline area that butts up against the foothills there, and do the same thing. Have the same trash ordinances, have the same PD response, have the same habituated behavior response. And then, as a group, you're pushing all those animals into the wild and saying, nope, that's the wall right there, stop. Um, rather than sending them to the next city over, because you passed some good legislation here. Um, but, yeah, that, I would encourage that, if you can, work with your fellow city council members, work with the county, and try and get a wall where you're basically stopping that movement across into, into the cities.
To, to expand on your question, uh, please, um, and hopefully Ms. Rich can answer this. And I believe in September, I, I want to see on average, we were seeing one entry a day, on average. Um, were other communities seeing that as well?
I, I don't believe that other communities, from, from what I understand and from the data that I've seen, were experiencing that same level of, of entry. Um, I will say that that number has, from Chief, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, I think it's, it's down to zero, we're thinking?
Yeah, so...
No, you're...
So, since the capture of the, uh, the bear that was moved, September nineteenth, we've had eighteen calls for service, no, uh, entries, not more attempts.
So, that, that begs the question of, of biology, the biologist. So, um, as far as hyperphasia, when does that generally start? Because it seemed like we were peaking with heat, and then it, we had a little downturn. And I would assume that when they, they're consuming twenty thousand now, their, their mind says, I need five thousand. Um, were they, have they entered that yet? Um, and I'm not trying to steal your time, but...
He's still on your thunder, you gotta fight for it. So, yeah, so, hyperphasia is a period of time, usually typically starts around late fall, kind of peters off through the winter. But it, our bears are a little different, and there's always a caveat when it comes to Southern California bears. So, for black bears, the cue for hy, or for hibernation, pardon me, is a lack of resources on the landscape. That's what triggers their brain to go, okay, it's time for hibernation, now it's time to den. We don't have that here in Southern California, in the same way that you might in really high elevation areas that have a lot of snowfall and snowpack, like, you know, New Hampshire, Tennessee, what have you. We don't have the same landscape that they do. And so, our bears behave a little differently. So, yes, we definitely see that decrease. Typically, we're seeing that decrease around November, December of, of calls that we're getting, just in general, period, on the story. Typically, calls, you know, go down. We'll definitely see bears out and about, they, they'll still be active on the landscape, but they're not nearly at that activity level. Typically, our October is our, like, buckle down, buckle up and get through it period of time, so that's typically when it peaks for us, but it, you know, peters out through November, again, depending on the weather, too. A lot of times, too, when bears are entering homes, especially when it's, it's starting in that spring, it's not just the food, it's definitely the food, but it's, oh, it's nice and cool in here, it's quiet, I can get out of the sun, same reason they take a dip in the pool, they still have that, it's hot, I'm uncomfortable, I'm gonna try to get out of the heat, why they go under crawl spaces as well. So, I hope that answers your question, Mayor. Did it, you want me to expand?
Yeah, I believe so. I mean, the, the big question was, are other communities seeing this? And then, the other one was, do we believe that we saw a, a reduction in entries? Because they're, they are now kind of entering that hyper, they're not, they're not looking for as many calories, let's put it that way.
Yeah, so, we are looking to analyze the genetic samples we have from a couple of home entries, as well as from the bear that was captured. But, but the general theory right now is that the bear was captured, was the primary bear responsible for the home entries? It, you know, we wouldn't have, you know, expected it to drop off like that if it wasn't necessarily that bear. Again, we do not have the genetic confirmation yet, we're still waiting on to get the results back from the lab. But that is what we can say, is, is, that's the, the running theory. So, that, that the bear that was captured and tagged was the responsible bear for the home entries.
Yeah, I mean, because, I mean, this is anecdotally, I mean, we were, during that time, we were, we were seeing a bear enter kind of a new region, and I don't know if Chief's here, what, if it's, if it's eighteen?
Zone eighteen.
Zone eighteen.
Okay.
Um, that, we, we weren't seeing that, and then that's where the bear was making entries, but yet, we were still seeing Upper Canyon, I don't know what their mobility is, and it, it felt like they were different bears. So, we're seeing bears with cubs in the Upper Canyon, we're seeing this female bear entering. So, it feels as though it wasn't the same bear, uh, for us. It feels like it was multiple bears at that time.
That was kind of the running theory, was just because of that. But at the same time, bears are incredibly capable, they've got four legs, we've got two, and they are just able to pound some pavement. So, they're definitely able to move and move quickly. We, you know, we've seen bears on, with GPS collars, and we're like, holy crap, on a cracker, you moved far really quick in just an hour, because we get hourly fixes from them. So, they're definitely capable of covering that. So, that was initially why we thought, is we, you know, saw a cluster down in kind of the southwest corner, and then cluster up in the canyon, and we're like, okay, well, you know, maybe it's two bears. But, again, without the genetic data, we can't confirm, but that's kind of the, the theory is, you know, they're able to move very far, very fast. So, and when they're motivated, and they're just taking a stroll, you know, it's possible.
Thank you.
Yeah, of course, thank you, Mayor.
I'll just ask one more question. Um, so, I think this is for Analyst Carlson or Chief Periantos. Um, so, it was very disturbing to me that we're still having people, uh, feeding bears. Um, I know we did a, a huge communication push for it with, uh, Fish and Wildlife. Um, can you tell us more about that? Are we pushing more, providing more education, are we citing them? Like, this, if people are feeding bears, this is, this is gonna escalate things worse, and it's, it's very concerning.
Life went out, specifically in the canyon, and took care of two very prominent feeders there. Uh, but it was only three weeks ago, I think, that I got the anon, when I started putting out that wildlife email address, that, um, you know, anonymously, the parent, that the residence behind my back porch always is leaving this out, and this out, and this out. And for our ordinance, remember, we do have the ability to, uh, enforce passive feeding if it becomes a recurring attractant. So, that is something that we might have to step up as well, but we're gonna send code enforcement, or, or Police Department, or Fish and Wildlife to address the, um, the feeders.
So, you haven't done it yet?
Um, yeah, we, I, I sent, the, the most recent ones were approached by code enforcement.
Okay.
Yeah.
What, what is the penalty?
It's administrative penalty, so it's, it's pretty much a warning, and then a hundred dollars, then two hundred, then five hundred, and it, I think it stays at five hundred if it's repeated a lot.
All right, so, not to bypass Mayor Proton, but I, I'd like to go to, uh, Councilmember Goss and come back this way.
Thank you, thank you for being here tonight. Um, I'm gonna sound confrontational, but I'm not being confrontational, I am curious. I'm a professor, that's just my nature. Have any of you had a confrontation with a bear on your property or in your homes? You have? You live up, up in Lake Tahoe, right?
I live in Sacramento.
In Sacramento? Okay. Um, my, my, my reason for me a, asking that is that I, I'm getting presentations from you guys about wildlife as if we're a wildlife park. Uh, my impression is that we're a city, that we're a, we are an urban area, we're a small city. And so, my, my question is, because when we think of public safety, we think of, if somebody breaks into your home, they go to jail for a very long time. If we had fifty intrusions in a month and a half, let's say you're right, let's say eighty percent of them was one bear, uh, why was that bear released when they, when, when they, why was that bear not euthanized? That's another question. I also have a question for Chief. Tonight's the first I've heard that we've had a citizen actually injured. I asked staff this last week, and I was told that we hadn't. Can you tell me, can you, uh, explain to me who that person, more about that particular incident?
So, this particular incident was not reported directly to the police department or the city. It came indirectly to the city, then it was brought to my attention. I sent a couple of officers up there, so the victim in this did not report it. We responded up there, it's in the Upper Canyon area, and, uh, I had a sergeant and an officer meet with the, the, uh, the citizen. The citizen was less incooperative, uh, wanted to know why we were there, who had reported it.
They didn't want it reported?
Absolutely not. The injury, uh, it's an anomaly, and the reason I say it's an anomaly, based on the statement that I got from my sergeant, is there was a mother bear with her two cubs. They were running out, going through the hallway, when our victim, I'm gonna call him victim, came into the hallway. So, I don't know if it was an intentional act, or whether or not the bear inadvertently took his legs out from under him and fell. I didn't get that far detailed, but less incooper, did not want us there, did not want it reported. However, we still documented it from our end.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Chief.
What was the extent of the injury?
I know it was a laceration, I believe it was right cheek. I don't have any further detail.
Okay, uh, so, a kind of a follow-up question to, uh, staff from the state. So, what, what we're being told here is that we're gonna have to deal with this problem while you collect data, right? And we're helping you collect data. So, the end game is we're gonna make a sales pitch to the legislature to give more money so that we can get the staff we now have. Uh, and yet, we're seeing an escalation each year with the staff we now have. To me, that's not a solution. What, are, am I missing something? Could you've kind of, could, could you please fill in exactly what your game plan is here so that we don't have ninety-seven incursions next summer? Because I, what I see happening is the, in, over the winter, we're gonna see everything fall off, because this happened exactly the same way last fall. It, the issue came to a head, people were getting upset, we heard about it, and then all of a sudden, the activity dropped off, and we just, you know, kind of swept under the rug. I don't want to face that next summer. We had a lot of really scary, uh, conflicts in the city that, that, that really could have gone the way of this injury conflict.
Um, let me address a couple of things. I didn't get your first, very first question, you pointed out about, you know, is this a city, or is this, uh, a wild animal park, or, I can't remember how you categorized it.
Well, I said that it's a city, that I, I, I feel like we're being treated as if we're a wildlife park.
I, I don't think you're being treated as a wildlife park. I mean, everywhere in California is habitat for, for fish and wildlife species. Your creeks that run through here have fish, your ponds have fish, your trees have birds, you know. Every bit of it is fish and wildlife habitat across California. What utilizes it and how it utilizes it is different, and in the case of bears coming into homes and stuff like that, yes, is an issue, that's a different than something of that nature. But everywhere in California is wildlife habitat. Um, to get to your point about collecting data, and, and going back to what we talked about with the incidents going from whatever to whatever number, you know, they got higher. Um, it very well probably was that one bear that was responsible for multiple of those. For the state to make a decision to take a bear, to go euthanize it, we have to make sure that we know that for sure. So, that's why we collect DNA samples, which we are just putting into place and making sure that we have. That's why we're getting citizen reports, so that we can identify, so we can tag bears, and so that we can track them and follow them. And when the time comes that an animal is at that, at that stage, then the state can make a decision to go take the bear. And we've done that numerous times across the state. Um, so, that's what the data collection is for. And then, on top of it, that's what I take to the legislature and say, I'm at this city council meeting, I'm over talking to Monrovia, we have an issue in here, and we have no permanent solution for it. I mean, Tim can tell you, he's probably got five wildlife biologists for the entire San Diego, LA area. I mean, you can only do so much, you know?
So, correct me if I'm wrong, but this seems hopeless. I don't see, I don't see an end game here at all.
I, I, actually, what's, what gives me hope is what was on the screen up there, which is us, the city, and the community working together to take care of this. So, the city's past ordinance is on trash, which is a great thing. The city's past ordinance is on feeding, which you guys are one of the first that I've heard of that was willing to do that. Normally, it's us that has to pursue that. We've increased staffing that we can right now, and are trying to collect more information. There's a few things that could still be done, there's things like electric mats and wiring that could be given out. The areas that have the biggest bear problems have a huge community component where people outreach to each other. So, if you research Tahoe, there's the Bear League, there's Barrier Solutions, there's three different companies that make bear mats for people to use on their properties. It's a community solution to the problem. And what we find is that ninety-nine percent of the bears want to be wild, want to stay wild, and want to do their thing. It's the one percent that are the problem, and we're trying to figure out how to deal with that one percent. And it's all of us that have to figure it out.
And so, one, one last, thank you for being patient with me. One last follow-up, uh, going on Councilmember Parkhurst's question. He pointed out a number that we had back in two thousand and five for the, what we had up here in the Angeles Forest.
Oh, yeah.
And you guys couldn't tell us, give us numbers, but, uh, Ms. Rich did say that it's more. So, what I'm, because where, where I'm going with this is, wouldn't it make sense if you're trying, because you have all these bear incursions now along foothills? Wouldn't it make sense to do something to curb the population in the forest? Because these bears didn't come out of thin air, they came down... Because these bears didn't come out of thin air. They came down from the forest for a reason, I suspect, and maybe you could tell me if I'm wrong, that there wasn't enough food to carry all those bears. And so they're down here because out of necessity. So isn't the, isn't the solution really to go back up there and do something about that population? Over the, over the long run, I realize that's probably several years of work.
So I'll get back to what I said. It's not the number of bears that's an issue, it's the behavior of those few bears that do it. So you could go coal a population. If you cold the wrong hundred bears out of it,
Up in the woods.
You're still going to have the same problem, because it's the behavior that's the problem.
You're talking about in the natural carrying capacity of the wood?
Yeah, it doesn't matter. It's the behavior that's the issue, not the number of bears.
Why are they here now? Why weren't they here ten years ago? I've lived here since nineteen ninety-six. I've never seen a bear until this year. They're new to our, now, they're not new to the Upper Canyon, I know that.
Yes, they are.
Or, or Monrovia. Maybe they are, but, but they're new to us. This is something very new. I've never, as I've been on the council, this is my tenth year, I've never received a complaint from a citizen that they had a bear in their house before, until this year.
I, I can tell you it's not new. Um, we've been getting reports and our wildlife biologists who have been here for a long ti- time can tell you that the human wildlife interface is not new. It's been happening.
You're in Sierra Madre.
I, I don't know. I would ask Tim or, or McKenzie specifically to Sierra Madre, but across all of California, it's, it's not a new thing.
Well, it is here in Sierra Madre.
Yeah, I will get back to, the number of bears isn't the issue, it's the hab- it's the habituation of those bears. So if I go coal twenty bears up there, if you don't coal the twenty that have that behavior, it doesn't matter. They're going to be here anyways. So that's why we're collecting DNA, that's why we're targeting and tagging bears, so those bears that have the behavior, we can stop, not just coal bears.
Okay, well, thank you for answering my question.
No problem.
Mayor Proton?
Sure. Um, kind of along those lines, um, and I'm glad you're here from Tahoe, because I, I feel like there's been some, you know, tailoring of, you know, sort of bespoke policy in Tahoe to address that, that particular circumstance. And so one of the things that I am concerned about is in many instances, it seems like there's a statewide policy or a statewide approach. And I understand that we're trying to tailor that to some degree here, but I mean, to me, you're starting from a point of a fallacy, right? I mean, that the state is, as you well know, incredibly diverse. Our, our populations are incredibly diverse. Our present geography is very different than Tahoe. Um, and so, I, I mean, this is, I know probably not, not your purview, but I'm interested also in figuring out how do we address it at that level as well? Because implementing policy that is done in a broad stroke can only go so far. And, you know, is it, is it that we need a, you know, Sierra Madre specific plan? Or, or, or a foot, or a, you know, two-ten foothill corridor specific plan? And, you know, what, what do we need to do to make that happen? Because, you know, I, I think a lot of the things that we're doing are great, and I, and I, I was hopeful, um, by the, the statement that you made that, that maybe we're at, still at a point where we can turn it around. I, I'd like to hear a little bit more about that, because I, you know, to, to Mayor Goss's point, I feel like it's tipped over, but I don't have the expertise to, that's, you know, that's sort of a feeling, not, 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 not a scientific observation. Um, but, you know, I'm worried that some of the things that we're doing, you know, are, are uh, the, the, the po- the product of policies that aren't necessarily specific to our area. So like the hazing, for example, you know, we're this responsible hazing, which I like that terminology, but hazing where? I mean, I live, you know, on, on the south side of town, like, there's nowhere for me to haze. I mean, it's not the freeway, but there's no easy way for me to haze a bear out of my property that isn't going to just, you know, either on the, on the busy street or into my neighbor's yard. And so I, we need to sort of figure out what specifically here we can do, and I, and especially if we're at this tipping point now where we can actually take action to, to stop this, you know, generational habituation. Um, I, I, and I know that's, that's a big question, but I think that's, to me, where, where I would start, because I'm thinking, you know, big picture, um, you know, while we handle the stuff at the, at the local level with the tools we have now.
So I, I totally agree with you. There's no one silver bullet that works in this situation, and our policy dictates how we handle bears as a department. It doesn't dictate what works on the ground in a specific city, county, or area, or something like that. Um, I do think that, specific to the city, a, a plan of wh- what kind of hazing is implemented, what tools are available and how and when you use it would be a, a great thing. Because as you said, if you're in the middle of the city, hazing something, you, you can't send it to somewhere wild. It doesn't work. It do- it doesn't help in that point. And maybe that's a situation where you call us and we deal with it. But if you're in one of the canyons on the perimeter and you can haze something into the wild, that may work a little bit better. So it's, there's no one answer to that. It takes sitting down and saying, we have this to deal with, we have bears coming in here, and what are the tools that we have? And you have implemented a lot of really good tools so far, but there's some tools that still aren't on the table for you guys. Like, you guys don't have depredation, which is a huge tool. To go back to, um, Councilmember Goss's point, some, most of the areas in California have depredation that they use as a tool for management for their citizens. The vast majority of areas.
Could you explain that, please?
So depredation is basically, if the, our fishing game code allows that if you have property damage by an animal, you can request a permit for us, and that permit can be filled for you to take the animal by your agent, which is yourself, someone you hire, someone, whatever, your, your agent. And in most areas, people work with either Wildlife Services or something of that nature. Someone gets a depredation permit and they contact them and they're able to go remove the bear. That's what our code allows.
Request a depredation permit?
No, you guys don't have any way to, to, to implement it in, in the city. You, wh- what most counties and cities do is they contract with somebody like Wildlife Services that provides that service to the public when it's needed.
So, so between nineteen eighty-six and two thousand and one, there were seven, an average of seven, um, depredation permits per year. So what changed between?
In what jurisdiction here?
San Gabriel Valley.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah, no, good question. Um, but so there, there were seven per year, so.
So people can request them and we can issue them still, they just have no way to deal with it. They can't, they have no one to request to take the animal. We don't do it. We're not allowed to in our code to implement depredation.
So what changed in the last twenty years that we couldn't do it? Because it, it was happening.
A homeowner can still do it, they just can't take the bear.
And this is a question, um, but from the, the map that I saw Ms. Rich put up, the depred- depredation were red dots. And I think in the Glendoria area, there were, there were red dots there. So there are still permits, I, not in Sierra, Sierra Madre, but it seems as though permits might be requested.
I think that particular map was based on, uh, the police department's categorization. So those aren't ac- those were not active depredations. That was just, that was our mapping of the data that was provided to us by the police department.
By other, other jurisdictions, not ours, because there was beyond Sierra Madre. I was, I was looking at Glendora specific.
Oh, was from WIR, okay. I stand corrected. Um, so it was other jurisdictions? I'll, I'll let you take it.
Thank you.
Just so, since I was the one to put the map on there. Um, so the map, what came from the WIR and our Wildlife Incident Reporting System, the reports that, that came down, it was made by our folks up at the lab in Sacramento, Wildlife Health Lab. So the depredation were bears that could theoretically be categorized as depredators, you know, so that there, there was damage. But they weren't necessarily categorized as actual depredation bears, because again, they did not fit the, the permit requested. So it's damage, in this case, not necessarily the, the CDFW twenty-twenty-two policy as such. So I think, does that answer your question, Mayor?
No, that, that, that clears things up.
Wonderful.
How do you follow up on it? The, the permit is, I'm confused.
I'll, yeah.
So you guys offer a permit, but people can't use it? I mean, how, how, how do you go about using the permit?
So the permit.
Who can do it? How can it be done?
Yeah, let me, it is confusing. I, I wholeheartedly agree. It doesn't make a whole lot of sense. So the permit is in our code that someone can request from us a permit to allow them to take or kill an animal that, that causes them property damage, and it pertains specifically to bears, mountain lions, uh, and a few other species in our code. All we do is issue them the permit. That's it. We issue them a permit that says you can kill this animal during this timeframe for, for harming your property. The homeowner requesting it has to figure out how to kill that animal.
Legally.
Legally.
That's the issue, right?
And the problem in the city, you can't discharge a firearm, you can't do any of that stuff. So legally, there's no way to, to do a depredation permit in the, unless you have a contract with Wildlife Services or someone like that that can legally trap it and take it and remove it.
And this couldn't be done by our police department? It couldn't be done for, by a company for hire?
It, it could, yes, it could. I mean, that's not my decision to make.
But you were saying the problem is, in your experience or the, your colleagues' experiences, there isn't a private agency that is available in this area? Is that sort of the crux of it?
Uh, Wildlife Services is the one who does most of it across the state.
That's a state agency?
It's a federal agency.
Federal.
So that, I was going to wait for my questions, but I want to, we're in, we're in, no, we're in this line, this line. So, uh, thinking of, thinking of these permits, I mean, how do you identify, without DNA or tagging, that's that bear?
Oh, that's a good question, yeah.
You know, how do I know? Because we do have a population, I, we don't know, we'd estimate somewhere eight to a dozen bears in our city regularly. So how do you, how, how do you identify that? And how to, and I think you said previously during the presentation that in order to be a trapper or working with a depredation permit, uh, they need to be approved by the state. Um, are there, the, I think that's what I heard. I could be wrong. Um, but if you can just expand on that a little bit, those two things.
Yeah, they have to be licensed with this.
Licensed, okay.
And so to get to your point about how do we know the bear, historically in depredation, we didn't. A permit was issued when someone requested it and can prove they had damage, and then they went and it was up to them to take the animal. In, in modern times now, we do our best to make sure that it's the right animal. So we'll collect DNA, we'll have ear tag stuff, we'll ask for photos, um, we'll ask for anything we can to try to make sure that they get the right animal.
Thank you. Do you have more questions, Mayor Proton?
Yeah, I mean, just, I guess just following up on my, on my prior question, which was a little bit of a dissertation. Um, it, it, it does seem, I mean, I just, just wondering sort of concrete steps to take, or, and who to talk to and kind of how to initiate this, where, you know, someone is looking at our particular situation in our particular area. Because I do understand anecdotally that, that Tahoe does have some very, you know, area geographic specific plans that were put in place either by your department or other agencies. And, you know, I think we're at the stage where we have to just figure out if that even makes sense for us, but then how do we then take that step? I mean, I, I, I know it's funding, I know it's all those kinds of things, but, you know, with your experience in Tahoe, like, what would be the best first step to sort of initiate that conversation?
Um, I, honestly, I think the best first step is, um, having, uh, a place where the city, the community, and the department are all on the same page about what they're doing, why they're doing it, and how they're doing it. Um, that is the, the biggest problem that I think we see anywhere, is the, the miscommunication among those of, well, I thought you were doing this, you weren't doing that. Um, and so I think your wildlife plan is a great place to start, but, um, it doesn't go deep into exactly who's doing what, why they're doing it, and when they're doing it. It really talks in generalities about we want to do these things. Um, so that's probably, the first place would be like a working group or something where city staff and the community and us sat down and said, what are the things we have available to us? Because there's some things that are available that aren't being used right now. What do we have that we are being able to use right now? Where are we seeing the biggest issues? And how do we allocate our resources to meet that need the best? And formulate an actual plan where you're targeting it and not responding to what you're doing.
Right, right, because I, like I said, I, I'm very hopeful by your statement that we might still be in a phase of being able to redirect this and not end up in this continual generational habituation. And, you know, that's something that we need your, your help with, because we're not experts. We have no way of knowing what steps we can take or should be taking to kind of help, help redirect that.
Well, I will give you another Tahoe example. You know, Tahoe's got, um, thousands of bears, not hundreds. Uh, and since we started collecting DNA on bears and since we started really tagging and watching bears, we found that it's really a handful that are responsible for almost everything that happens in Tahoe. It's not the vast majority of bears. The vast majority live at that interface without a problem. They're still wild, they may walk down the street once in a while, but they don't go and trash, they don't cause those problems. The vast majority of the problems are a few bears. And once we figured out how to, you know, that it was a few bears, then it opened up the tools such as depredation with, you know, distinct knowing what bear it was, and those types of things, to be able to get those bears either out of the population or to target them for hazing efforts to change the behavior.
Um, I think that was, I think that covered, um, yeah, that covered my questions, thank you.
Yeah, and I'm trying to figure out what's the question, what's the comment? So, um, a couple, a couple of questions, just kind of based on the presentations that were, that we'd seen. Um, I think I asked some of them already. Um, so I, I'm an economist, that's what I do, and we sometimes talk about uncomfortable things, because we look at data and we analyze data. And I didn't analyze the data completely, but, um, and I'm not, just because I'm saying this doesn't mean I'm an advocate for anything. I'm trying to be neutral here, um, because I want to know. Because as you stated in, in the slide, the public safety of our residents is paramount, and that is our charge here. I think that's probably our first charge, and part of public safety is water and all these things. So these, these issues, we need to keep our residents safe. Uh, so that's, that's the reason why we're here today, and thank you for coming. Um, that being said, uh, you do have data on your website regarding bear hunts. And, um, and I know you, you had a little exchange with, with Councilmember Goss. I felt it was a little chicken egg there, so I want to make sure. I look at the data, I didn't, I didn't run an empirical analysis on it, but I see, um, I see the bear hunt. Um, and I looked at the tooth data as well for, for the aging of the bears and, um, the sexing of the bears and all that information. Um, what I did see was, uh, obviously a large drop off when, uh, dogs got taken out of the hunt. Um, and that wasn't too long ago, and, um, you know, that, that talks to a statewide population. Then I also looked at the tooth data, and I saw, um, kill dates and relative, you know, relative frequencies of different counties. So Tahoe on the California side, I think has three counties, right? Um, uh, down here, we have one county. Uh, in our one county, I'm seeing counts of, the tooth counts of something on the neighborhood of five, four, maybe twelve on a high year. We're seeing pages and pages of the counties around, around these, what I consider rural areas. I spent a lot of time up and down the three ninety-five, uh, fishing. So I know the difference between the San Gabriel Valley and our mountains and the mountains there. So you're already at high elevation, there is a, and, and again, I'm not trying to promote a hunt, but I'm just, I'm, what I'm seeing is that it's easier to hunt in those types of, um, uh, geographies relative to our steep, steep mountains here where the Angeles National Forest resides, because you're not going to be hunting in a, in a city, right? So I'm to- part of your charge is population management. So I want to understand the population management, and I do understand your point as well, and I understand your point. So I feel as though it, it is a little chicken egg, because my family, my wife's family has been here for, uh, going on seventy years and never saw bears, uh, never.
Can you explain the chicken egg?
Well, the, 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 the explanation was, well, the, if we, if we, we, we call the population, it's not going to, it's not going to change bears with bad behavior. They're going to have bad behavior anyway. But I, I feel as though there was a reason, as, as Councilmember Goss stated, there was a reason they came here. Um, and what was that reason? It could be drought, it could be fire, there could be all kinds of reasons, I don't know. Um, but, um, it seems as though the wild population is not being called by citizens in the state as though it had been before. And again, I'm not advocating for anything, I'm just looking at data. Um, so kind of what is your take on that? Um, do you think that has an effect? Um, and, you know, because what we're asking for is maybe a regional policy, because we, again, we are not Tahoe or Mammoth. Uh, we are very different as far as the geography and the, and the density of population relative to those other places. So I know there was a lot, but if you can speak to some of it.
No, I, I mean, a couple of things out of it. Um, yeah, there's no doubt that the number of bears taken in the state has gone down since the hound hunting ban went into effect. Um, you know, that was, that was legislation that was passed. That was not something the department, um, enacted. It was enacted by the voters. And so, uh, it is what it is, and, and the numbers reflect that. Um, you did mention numbers for the areas around Lake Tahoe, and I would just caveat by saying those numbers all come from the other side of, of the basin. So the number of bears taken out of Lake Tahoe itself is almost none. Um, so there's really no hunting in Lake Tahoe. Uh, very few, um, if any. I don't know as to the specifics of hunting here, and maybe McKenzie or, or Tim can speak to it. But, um, looking up as I was driving in, I say, you're absolutely right, it's rough terrain to hunt in and, and not a, not an easy place to go after bears, for sure. Um, there's nothing that we can do that would, um, bypass the ban on hound hunting. But the department does support any efforts for hunter participation and for, um, the promotion of, of hunting, um, in California and, and doing it responsibly. I mean, that's something that's our mission. And so anything that we do has that backdrop to it, that we support hunting and fishing in the communities and, uh, you know, look forward to helping people learn how to do it without dogs and being successful at it.
Yeah, because there's, you guys, I mean, there's legislation, there's rules, and you got to follow the rules. Just, as I, as I've said many times with your staff on the ground, they are, they are working within a policy that's set forth before them, and all they can do is work within those policy limits. And they are doing a darn good job at, at their And they are doing a darn good job at their job within those policy limits. But I think kind of what we're asking, I don't want to get into discussion. Let me see if I have any more questions, because I think we kind of, we answered quite a few.
Can I ask a quick question while you're looking?
Please.
So, so are there multiple ways to hunt bears? Does it, does it all have to be rifle? Or is it, are there other ways to, to hunt bears?
It's not really the method that's the issue, it's ease. Hounds just made it simply far easier to hunt bears. I mean, they would track them down and, you know, treat them.
So, as far as the, and I, maybe I just want to understand, because I know you guys have limited resources. You're severely underfunded as a, as an organization, state organization.
I appreciate you acknowledging that.
I've looked. So, as far as that's concerned, you know, you're charged with the population maintenance, right? Or maintaining a healthy population of, of wildlife. Does, does the hunt go into the, or the taking of bears go into the factor of that? Like, how do you, or is that one of the things that kind of gets pushed to the side because of lack of funding? I mean, how, what's going on?
Hunting is one of the few things that we actually get reasonably good data every year on, so it definitely goes into the decisions. And right now, it's not out yet. We're in the, in the midst of redrafting our bear management plan for the whole state, which certainly will take into account the new hunting numbers that we have with the, with the hound hunting ban. But realistically, you know, the local level and the local involvement is what's really gonna solve the problem, not an overarching management plan for the whole state, because it's not specific enough to your area to, to help you deal with the issues that you guys are, are having here.
Thank you. So, I'm not trying to extend this meeting, but I, I want to make sure.
I was gonna say, I'm available, I'm here, I'm down from Sacramento, so I'll answer.
Well, I, I'm actually gonna suggest maybe a 10-minute break for everybody to kind of stretch their legs, do whatever they need to do, because we've been sitting here for quite a while. Not trying to make the meeting longer, just want to make sure everybody's comfortable. And then we'll come back and we'll have public comment, sound good? Okay, let's take a 10-minute break. Give everybody a minute or so to settle, and then I'll take it back to the city clerk and ask her how many cards we have.
Are you officially calling the meeting back to order, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, I'm officially calling the meeting back to order.
Thank you, 8:53.
All right, Madam City Clerk, do we have any, I'll ask you about emails first, and then let's, let's move on to yellow cards.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city clerk's office received one email prior to the 3 o'clock deadline from Lori Adams. There was a subsequent email that was received after the 3 o'clock deadline. It was forwarded to the city council, both emails were forwarded to the city council. The second email, we did explain that we couldn't guarantee that it would be read in time for tonight's meeting. And so, we move on to the yellow speaker cards. The first yellow speaker card is from Glenn Lambden.
Just remind everybody, please state your name, residence, and you have three minutes.
Honorable Mayor, Mayor Potam, council members and staff, I'm Glenn Lambden, 444 Sturtevant. First, I'd like to answer, Councilmember Goss, you had a question, your, your chicken egg. Just like to bring your attention back to the Zoom meeting we had September 23rd, 2020. We were told that the reason that we started to have a urbanized bear population is because the Angeles National Forest was no longer able to disdain that population. It was too small, forced the bears, they urbanized, and we're in the situation we have right now. One of the things that's been missing in the conversations tonight, and the very foundation of all of these policies, and this is really policy-driven, and for you council members, this really is public safety, is the idea of, of coexistence with bears. In my opinion, it's absolutely absurd, that we would be told that, living in a residential area, that we should have to learn how to live with apex predators. I just can't wrap my mind around any type of rational thought that would say we should live with bears. The coexistence policies were not based on any type of real science. There was no risk assessments that were done with it. Coexistence policies are really reaction to the fact that fish and wildlife lost control of the populations in the wilderness, which brought the, the bears down into our urban areas. I just would like to, I want to really make this quick. Last April, you guys determined that the bears were a threat to public safety. And I'm asking that you don't compromise that decision at all, and that you don't accept any, any type of quick fix or, or second-best solution, because I believe the Sierra Madre residents deserve better than that. And, you know, to, to have us to be, we're kind of human guinea pigs here. They're asking us to just be patient, live with the bears, until they collect some data. And then what? I mean, the real, the real issue here is that the bears in the urban areas need to be removed. And the populations in the wildlife need to be reduced to a point that can sustain a healthy bear population. And fish and, fish and wildlife are gonna have to maintain that population and not let it get out of hand and get, put us back into the same position again. So, on that, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Lambden.
Mr. Mayor, the next speaker is Pat Alcorn.
Mr. Mayor, council, and yes. I'm Pat Alcorn, and I live at 741 East Grandview. We moved into a small cabin in the canyon in 1964 with our two rung-bugsious boys. And in the six years we lived there, we didn't ever see a bear or a hint of a bear. We loved living in the canyon, but when the cabin became too small for us, well, actually for the boys, we did the next best thing in 1970 and moved to the flats on Grandview. We love it here. After an eight-year absence while we were overseas and a search for a place anywhere in the world to retire, we found the perfect place on Grandview in Sierra Madre. Here, we enjoy our retirement, working in the community, in our gardens, and even watching the birds in the bird feeder, the deer feeding in our front yard, and on occasion, a wildcat, skunk, and raccoons. All that tranquility changed about four years ago when a bear entered our garage and destroyed a brand-new freezer. At that time, we didn't even dream that there would be a bear that was capable of overturning a big freezer chest, or there would be any bear at all. Later on, they have done quite a bit of damage, knocking down fences, doing other things in our, in our yard and in our neighbor's yard. Fast forward to about two years ago, when the bear population began taking over the city and breaking into homes. We can, let's see, we've been told that the bears are hungry, and they're timid, and they're afraid of humans. We also know that they are not timid or afraid of entering homes to do damage, even when occupied. Yelling at them to go away only results in shooing them into your neighbor's yard and not back into an environment that could support them. Why should an entire population of the city be retrained to accommodate an invading population of wild, hungry animals? Bears haven't been in our trash for years, so retraining us hasn't helped. They just find other food sources like kitchens. We live in an urban environment, and this is, this indeed is a public safety issue. We shouldn't have to barricade ourselves in our houses, put up with property damage. We shouldn't have to barricade ourselves in our houses, put up with property damage, or worry about break-ins. And I'm urging, urging the Fish and Wildlife authorities to come up with a realistic policy and action now, now, that will alleviate the concentration and proliferation of the bears in our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Alcorn.
Mr. Mayor, Carla Cohen.
Is Ms. Cohen in the gallery? Carla Cohen? No? Okay.
And Mr. Mayor, Mary Carney.
No rush, Ms. Carney. I mean that, no rush.
Oh, I'm really moving now. This is, I'm Mary Carney. I live at 62 West Allegria. And the reason I wanted to speak on bears tonight is that I and my husband attended the presentation at the library. We had the Fish and Wildlife people here. And it was an excellent presentation, very well attended by a number of people in town. One of the suggestions was that there be some education of the new people moving into town. And Mr. Parkhurst said he would think about putting something into the welcome package. Well, it seems to me that we have realtors in town dealing with Sierra Madre property. And I think that each Realtor selling or any landlord renting something in Sierra Madre should provide the prospective tenant or the prospective buyer with an overview of Sierra Madre's wildlife challenges and what the rules and regulations are. So that they don't, for example, a homeowner doesn't move in and suddenly discover he's got bears and panthers in his backyard. That's a challenge. There is a new book out. It's called What the Bears Know. It was written by author Chris Erskine. Some of you might remember him as being an LA Times columnist. He worked with Steve Searls, who was the Bear Whisperer from Mammoth. Back in Mammoth, back in the 1990s, Steve Searls was tasked by the chief of police to kill 16 problem bears. And as he researched the problem, he changed his mind and he changed Mammoth. And there is now a book out called What the Bears Know. And there was a book signing at Romans last Tuesday. Romans was expecting maybe 20, 30 people. Over 100 people showed up, a lot of them from Sierra Madre. And one of the reasons I'm speaking today is that beginning of September, my husband and I were in different areas of the house and we heard strange noises. And when I finally was able to get my husband's attention over the sound of the air conditioner, he came out from his office and found a bear with his nose in the freezer section of our refrigerator in the kitchen. He walked up to within 12 inches of the bear and he told me, "Mary, there's a bear in the house." And as soon as the bear heard that, he picked his head up, looked around, and went back out the door. He went through the dog protective screen on our screen door, so he came in and out. We now are having a new screen door put in. This is a security one. But it was really interesting. And I think this, What the Bears Know, What the Bears Know is a book that all of you should have and read, that it should be available in our library, that we should invite Steve Searls in to supplement the information from Fish and Wildlife. And thank you.
Perfect timing. Thank you, Ms. Carney.
Mr. Mayor, Peggy Dallas.
Hi, I'm Peggy Dallas. I live at 312 and 1/2 East Grandview Avenue. I've got just so many questions about what's going on, but I'm just going to focus on two of those areas right now. One is the idea of being taught how to coexist with bears when we know, and we've heard here tonight, that all that does is, in a sense, help them habituate because we're just pushing them away from our place to somebody else's place who's maybe, I don't know. I just don't understand how coexisting is going to reverse the situation that's obviously growing very quickly here in Sierra Madre. The second is, I read the whole California State Bear Management Policy today and I got to thinking about the bear that was recently captured. And I'm pretty sure that was the bear that attempted to break into my place twice, ripping screens, breaking glass, and had been frequenting my property quite a bit. I had been following all the guidelines, short of the electric fences and the mat thing. I've been doing those things for years, so I'm not sure why my property was picked, but it was. Maybe it's the Jalousy windows. But how that bear, it's apparent now that that was probably the bear that's been causing all the spike in break-ins. And so I've got a question as to how that bear was classified, when it was, you know, tasered or whatever, and what the expectations were for relocating. And then when it came back into Rancho Cucamonga, why was relocated again? When, I think it's, my understanding, clear that habituated bears don't, can't be relocated. They just come back. And so then it got relocated to San Bernardino. And then it ended up being killed on the 210 freeways, my understanding, which just breaks my heart. I was standing three feet from the bear, shouting for it to go away in my kitchen, and I could see just this confusion on the bear's face, like this is what my mom taught me to do, you know? It was a real creature with feelings and everything. It's like, and to be treated like it was, I mean, what was the bear thinking when it got relocated? It must have been terrified. It came back to someplace that looked familiar. It got relocated again. It was terrified. I saw the videos of, you know, on TV in San Bernardino. So, this is, that seemed really inhumane as a policy. Okay, that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Dallas.
Mr. Mayor, Sandy Cristan.
Thank you for your gift of time. I'm Sandy Cristan and I'm at 1900 Stonehouse Road. We have had repeated bear issues at our home. My husband has been charged twice. Our fences have been broken. Our trash is routinely tipped. We have locked our garbage cans and locked our neighbors' garbage cans because we didn't want to be cleaning that up as well, with their permission. I attended the meeting at the library and came away with, I'm doing all the things. I'm being told to lock my garbage can. I'm being told not to leave food out. I'm being told, I'm doing all the things and I still have bear. The one thing I'm not doing is reporting them. So since that meeting, I have reported four different bear sightings. And I got a response once, and the response was a lovely, long letter about the things I should be doing. And I said back, "I'm already doing those things. Now what?" There just doesn't seem to be a solution and I am frightened. I don't like to be told, excuse me, that I should be in my home with my windows closed. Really? If I leave a room, I need to close the window? I'm very uncomfortable with that as a solution to the bear problems, to lock me in my home. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Cristan.
Bill Patzer? Bill Patzer, Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Patzer? Dr. Patzer, sorry.
Bill Patzer, I'm at 442 Mary Posa Avenue. And for full disclosure, I also serve on the Environmental Commission. So is it okay to?
Absolutely okay. You're a resident.
Okay. Now, there is a bear issue in Sierra Madre. Everybody knows that, all right? We don't need any more data. I mean, more data is good data. But I agree with the mayor and I agree with Jean, is that we, I've been here for 35 years. I never saw bears come down as far south as Orange Grove Avenue, you know? Everybody's got a bear story, all right? And it's a problem. Some people are frightened, all right? And so, and it's not just a problem here. I went on the internet and I looked up bears' problems. And they're happening in the Pacific Northwest, Montana, Idaho. There's been a couple of really bad cases in the Northeast, even in the Mid-Atlantic. Canada has them. The Europeans have them. So the question is, why are we having a bear problem? And I'm going to propose something to you. You know, we're living in a different world. The world is warming, all right? You all know about climate change. It's a, not an opinion, it's a scientific fact. You're living in a warmer world, all right? Ecosystems are changing, not only on the land, in the oceans. And we see it here in California. You know, the last 20 years have been, 20 of the driest years we've recorded going back to the 1850s, all right? The last three years were exceptionally dry, all right? And so what we see is, is that ecosystems are responding to that. And one of the ways they're doing it is, is that we're having extreme forest fires up and down the state of California, not just in California, in Canada, in Mexico, in Europe. And so the environment is changing. The bears, their normal environment is now a warmer world, all right? The conifer forests are moving to higher altitudes and so their world is changing. And so what I'm proposing here is that the bears are doing like we all do. You know, we all adopt a climate change. And the way most of us adopt to it is a higher bill from Southern California Electric, all right? Because it's warmer, all right? And so I'm proposing that the bears essentially are responding to this change in their environment due to climate change. And they're moving into the urban environment, which has moved into their environment over the last 50 years. More and more so. And so, let's try to, before we go out and shoot all the bears.
Dr. Patzer, if you could give your final thought.
Yeah, before we go out and shoot all the bears, let's try to understand this in a scientific way. And I think the big picture is, not only here in Southern California, Sierra Madre, but globally. It's climate change, all right?
Thank you, Dr. Patzer.
There you go.
Thank you.
There are no other speaker cards, Mr. Mayor.
You can. Yeah, come on down and just state your name and your residence. You can fill out that yellow card subsequent to your comment.
My name is Teresa Tortomasi. I'm at 286 Old Ranch Road up in the Upper Canyon. And what I would like to say is that I'm on social media, I come to meetings, I'm a professional. I know what's going on usually in Sierra Madre. And it seems that a whole lot of people think that everybody does, but they don't. People around me, they don't know. They, yeah, there's a meeting, they're not here. There were like 40 people here. How many people in the city?
11,000.
11,000, okay. How many residences? Isn't it like 5,000, 4,400 or something? Okay. So like when there was a bear on my street, I saw somebody come out, they go, "What do I do? What do I do?" They had no idea what to do because they were never told. So I would propose something like to make sure that what everybody's saying, well, everybody knows because we've been talking about it. No, 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 because the people who are following things have been talking about it. But all the residents don't know. The only way is to either have a mailer and not a mailer that looks like this, that has a whole bunch of writing on it. Something that has bullet points, because a lot of people go, "Oh, yeah, that's lying. Okay, I'm not going to look at that." It needs to say, because I heard you guys talking about 100, 200, 500, somebody's going to go, "What? I can't feed the bear. He was hungry." You're going to say, "Well, you're supposed to know." Well, I know that we're supposed to know, but they don't know. Only the 40 people here and maybe 100 people here and there's like thousands of people, they don't know. It has to be, until you can take a step and say, "Well, we already told everybody. Now we're going to take the next step." Everybody needs to know. And it needs to be something like, "No feeding bears." It's against the law to feed wildlife, in big letters, so that when they get it, they go, "Oh, I didn't know that. Why is that?" You know? And the other thing is that, I don't know for how many years, but my husband and I have, we put anything that smells good in the freezer. I realize everybody doesn't have that ability. But to think that you can just put all your leftover pizza in a bin and lock it and that a bear's not going to go, "Mmm, that smells good," and try to get it, is not reasonable. We have to be very careful. And I know neighbors that, until it's really, "Don't feed the bears," I know neighbors that have said, "Oh, I love the bear, so I'm going to feed him." I think they all need to know about the Colorado bear that died from plastic. That is not, it's horrible that that's their diet. So before we take any steps, and yes, there's a safety, you know, thing. But I think that some people are more, you know, speak out all the time and there's a whole lot of people that haven't, either because they're, you know, can't, or they just haven't come here. And they need to know. So they need to know the rule and why. And not, like I said, not in a long paragraph. Dun, 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 four things, you know, and everybody sees it and you make it a color and they go, "What is this?" And maybe a follow-up because that's going to be much less than any kind of a lawsuit because you, you know, the city council didn't do anything, the police didn't do anything. And you're trying, but you need to reach everybody, okay?
Thank you, ma'am. And if I could just have you fill out that card so we can have for the minutes. Thank you. Any more comments? All right, let's bring it back to the council. And like I said, I'd like to, the council, we didn't have as many commenters as we thought we might, but let's give the council an opportunity to follow up with any follow-up questions that we thought may have been important for us, for policy issues, right? Do we have anything from what we heard? I mean, personally, I heard coexistence a few times and that wasn't part of any of the presentations. So I'm not aware of it, but if you can enlighten me, the council and the public as far as what the coexistence policies are, when those were enacted, what they are, and what the goals are regarding that, that would be, I think, helpful.
Yeah, the department doesn't have a coexistence policy. We have our bear policy. The bear policy dictates how we deal with different types of bear activity. Coexistence has been brought up a couple of times and that's, you know, how do we live with wildlife? And we do talk about living with wildlife, but it's not necessarily a coexistence. It's more how do you manage how you behave to hopefully affect the way that the wildlife behaves or how you treat wildlife in order to make their behavior better, to work together with the various areas that you've got, so.
So thank you. No, so I want to, I want to ask you, because I think that's, that answer gives me a lot of insight. So, and from what I heard earlier, is the policy, the policies that are set forth and what we ought to do and with our current situation with bears, is the end goal not to have bears walking through our neighborhood, but rather to break the cycle of habituation? I'm not trying to feed you an answer, but I really want to know. Break the cycle of habituation in order then, and I like that image of the whole corridor having a wall. There's nothing here you want. Stay out. Is that, is that the end goal?
End goal would definitely be to, you know, not have the bears coming down into the city. It would be wonderful if they all stayed up in the forest, but... But there's always gonna be an element where you've got, you know, young bears that are being pushed out from, you know, their parents have kicked them out of the house, so to speak. And they're moving down, they're exploring, they're gonna come into, into the city. If there's nothing for them, they should go back. If you've got problem bears that have come down and have become habituated, and it may be something in, in terms of, during the drought, a lot of bears moved down and came into the city and learned new behaviors. And now we're dealing with a little bit of that as well. But by trying to work through the, the real problem bears that may have developed during the last few years, getting back to the point where we've got the bears that are not being attracted anymore because there's nothing for them, that would be the ideal.
Okay, and so I hope you guys picked up kind of the, the flavor of Sierra Madre, I know McKenzie probably knows, but the, our, the bulk of our residents love wildlife. That's one of the reasons they live here, right? They absolutely love wildlife. But I think Peggy Dallas's comment kind of painted a picture of, she's scared. And a lot, there's, and there aren't a lot of people here, but I have kids in Little League, and I talk to parents with young kids, and they're telling, I'm hearing it anecdotally all the time. And they're, they don't come to meetings, they're busy. I don't know why I'm here, I've got kids, but, you know, I'm busy too. But, you know, we, they're scared, they don't want their kids out in the, in the yard by themselves, they don't want them swimming. And these are beautiful majestic animals, and how sad is it that, and I'm, that they're becoming these animals that are digging for trash, and then eventually wind up dead on a highway? I know we have to do our part, but as far as we're concerned, we're, we're not, we, I know there's funding issues and all kinds of issues, but the policies kind of need to be adapted to, I think, our region. We aren't South Lake Tahoe, we aren't Mammoth, we hear those, we hear those communities, I spend a lot of time in those communities, I know how different we are. If you look at a satellite image of our area, it's much different. There's no, there's no habitat to escape to. I mean, we have one, one, one direction north, and that's it. So, you know, hopefully you can feel what we're trying to accomplish here.
Yeah, absolutely.
We, we love the, they're majestic, beautiful animals, right? I know that's a, that's a grizzly bear, not a, not our bear, but we love our bears in California. We want them to stay wild, and that's our goal, right? We always hear a fed bear is a dead bear. We do have to alter, and we have been altering, we've heard testimony of our residents altering their behavior, and they feel as though, I'm doing all the right things, yet I'm still being penalized by this bear destroying my property. So I feel as though you're hearing us, and we, I love the communication that we're having with, with your department, but we don't wanna wait till it's too late. We don't want that issue. I know it's very rare that thing happens, but the frequency of what we're seeing is, is a major concern of our residents.
Understood, yeah.
And I kinda got onto commentary, which is fine, but do we have any more questions predicated on what we heard testimony from our residents?
To follow up on Dr. Patzer, you know, I mean, I think he's right about, about seeing this as an increasing problem. I think it was even in the New York Times that I stayed. Is it, is this accurate? Is this becoming a bigger issue across the country? Are there things that we can learn from, from, from places that are more urbanized?
So I think it, it can be daunting if you do like bear attack search on Google, right? You immediately come up with places all across the US where brown bears in particular, and once in a while, black bears, are coming into contact with people and even killing them in some instances. I think that, you know, first in California, that's extremely rare. Going back to what we talked about, where your number of incidents and the person that got scratched, almost all the incidents that we've been investigated is when a person goes in, there's a bear inside, and they're blocking the bear's exit, where the bear can't get out, and the bear has to go past them to get out. And usually that means the bear knocks them over, whatever, and you end up with a scratch or something like that. The incidence of actual, you know, attacks in California from bears is actually really low. But going back to what you asked before, the end goal is that if a bear stumbles into the city, it's an accident, not a behavior. And when that accident is realized, it quickly leaves, and that doesn't become a behavior. That's the end goal, that's where we wanna be with everybody. And that's what the point of all this is, is how do we get there? Going back to Councilman Creazer's thing, what, what do we do here to get there, where it's an accident and not a, a habit that's happening? And that's what, that's what we need to figure out.
That's encouraging to hear.
Also, though, I'm sorry to, to bring this up, but I don't care if it's a bear that's attacking, or a bear that's inside a home that's injuring someone, the fact is that someone's injured. So to me, you know what I mean, like, I, it doesn't matter to me whether it was aggressive or not in that sense, it's still public safety. And either way, the end result was someone was injured, and not just scratched, but gouged with, you know, large scars that's gonna be there, and, and it's dangerous. So I guess, it, to me, it doesn't matter what their intent was, or whether it was scared, or the action was that he was inside the house, or that he was blocked, she was blocked. It's that the result is harm to public safety. And if that happened on our school ground, when the bear was inside the fenced area, and if the kids had not been locked down and released, now you're talking about a whole lot of children running around with a bear that's gonna be scared and confused. Again, the end result is public safety issues.
I mean, I agree with you in terms of the end result, but to me, it's important to know that because, to me, it affects how you deal with it, right? Because, you know, or how you educate the public, right? If, if, if we had multiple instances of bears who were aggressive, or actually initiating attacks, sort of without sort of this, this response, that to me would call for a different, a different, a different response from us or from, from, from the department. Whereas, you know, we can educate folks on, I mean, again, the, the end goal is to keep people, keep bears out of houses completely. But, you know, in the instance where the bear is in your house, you know, maybe we can develop, you know, emergency response type things like we do, like, here's what you do if your house is on fire, or here's what you do if, you know, there's an earthquake. Here's what you do if your, if a bear's in your house. I mean, I, I, you know, it sounds funny, but like, but that, but that to me is then more responsive to the problem if we know that, that the, you know, human-to-bear contact is because of that, that instance. I mean, you're right, at the end of the day, we need to prevent the contact, but to me, the, the how we prevent the contact is, you know, can be influenced by the-
I think the urgency to me seems more last, more research-based versus more, I need to take an action now because this is an issue.
Right.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, but our default right now, since we're collecting data, and I, I take your point, I think your end goal, I, I accept that. I wrote these words down, I forgot who said, they will go back. So if they go back, and that's the point of all the data collection. So that's the long term, I don't know how many years that'll take. In the short term, we have to have urgency issues with public safety, and the default right now is that you aren't gonna do anything, it's really us. It's really gonna be our police department, right? I mean, is that not where we're at right now?
Unless McKenzie's close, that she can-
So, and so I, I wanna just get clarification here, 'cause I feel like this, this, this interaction, this cooperation that's going on is a good thing, if, if we're trying to get them to go back. And if there are bears that are around here that are habituated already, and they are, let's say, they're goners, they're, they're, they're already too far gone, then over a period of time, our police department will weed them out, right? We'll, we'll, we'll corner them, you guys will show up, dart them, we take them out, right? Eventually, we'll get rid of them. I'm just trying to find, is that, is that our default, or do we have no default in terms of public safety?
No, I will actually challenge, I mean, I think the, the bear sightings that we've had, and the instances, the break-ins that we had, you know, recently, you know, the one, the more public ones, the ones that brought the helicopters and all that near our houses, I mean, I, I-
Three doors down from my house.
Yeah, I know. I feel like the response from the department was pretty immediate. I mean, they, they were here to deal with that situation. And I don't know that, that can happen every time we have a break-in, and sometimes we don't hear about break-ins until after they've occurred and the bear has exited. But I feel like, I mean, and maybe it's completely anecdotal, but I feel like the ones that, the serious ones where we've had, and the bears haven't left, and we have to figure out a way to get out, the department has responded to that, and so I don't know that it's always gonna have to be fire, our, our police department. So I think it's a combination, right? I mean, the problem is, they don't have the manpower, and our police are, are limited in what they can do in response. And so we just have this, you know, in-between sort of situation where that's, to me, what we need to figure out. Like, how can we get them more staffing, or give, give our, our force, you know, more training so that we can fill that gap in between, when they can't come to a more immediate situation? And, you know, our police is, aren't, aren't armed, per se, with, with, with the resources that they need, or the, or the authority that they need.
That's kinda what I've been getting at. I just wanted to get, I feel like you're putting meat on the bones here of what is so nebulous up to this point. I feel like, yes, a little more staff help from the state, a little more training for us. And then we, I think the, Ms. Tortomasi is right, we have to do a, a far more aggressive job of publicizing some of the basics here that we thought, we, we thought the public was aware of, but I think she's right. And I wanna, I wanna come out of this meeting with something to give the public. This is what we're doing, this is what, this is where there's, this is where we're headed, there's hope for, for an end of this situation. 'Cause some of the people that talk to you today who are, who are fearful, I've talked to many others who are far more fearful, at least in how they express themselves. Terrified is the word I would use. People on my street, because we had that break-in, but we also had, on Mother's Day, I, my son was accosted by a bear, well, he was shooting baskets out in front of our house at four o'clock in the afternoon. Why? Because our neighbor doing what he was told, hays the bear into our yard, so he can run up against my son. He ducked out of the way, he's a young adult, no problem. But, you know, next door, there were children, there usually would have been children, they weren't there that day when the bear went shooting through there. So I feel like the, there, there's real fear there, 'cause I've talked to people who've expressed that to me, actually a lot of people, particularly in our neighborhood. The three of us all live in the, in the Zone Eighteen, we're all just a few blocks from each other, and we're, we're flatlanders. We're way down at the bottom of the city, we're not anywhere close to the canyon or the hillside. So this is really big news, when you've got bears down there on the, you know, on Ramona, Manzanita, Orange Grove. I mean, that's, that's really saying something, you know?
So what I'm hearing-
Yeah, and I think your point, Councilmember Goss, is, you know, what do we do? How do we move forward? Because we do not want a policy, and I'll repeat, we do not want a policy where our police department is shooting bears in houses, right? With, with lethal firearms.
Unless they absolutely have to, I mean, they may-
No, I'm saying, but, the, if, if it's life and death, absolutely, Chief has expressed that, that will happen. Just like with a, with a, a dog that was attacking somebody, or something of that nature. But my bigger concern is, because of the resources, if we, if our PD's able to kind of figure out where a bear is, and they're in a house, we don't have the training, nor do we have the tranquilizers, nor do we even have the authority to trank a bear. We could kill one, but we can't trank one, is my understanding. And we have Ms. Rich, who's like stretched very thin in her team. I, I know the, the answer might be, we, we're able to get some, we're able to liaise with our neighbors, and maybe have a local licensed trapper to then deal with these issues, you know, quickly, rather than us waiting.
Is that, is that an option?
I think it is, I think it is.
Well, I guess, I, I agree with Councilmember Goss, is that, do we know that there's someone, like, like, what I heard was, was that it was a federal agency or federal body that could, could actually get the depredation permit and do it?
Now, the permits are issued by people.
Those are resident-based, yeah.
Okay, but the, but the people who could execute on it, the people who have the authority to go and actually take, 'cause the residents can't actually do anything with the permit. They can ask for it, which is great, but then they can't do anything with it, right?
Not in our city, no.
Right, so, so, I mean, to me, the biggest charge that, that I would ask is, can we find someone that can actually act on a depredation permit? Like, if we've got an issue that can, that can be on-call because we've got resources, I, it, it's not clear to me that there's someone out there. And I, and it's not clear whether-
If we call the state and they're just over, over, they don't have the ability to get there when we need them. Which I'm not saying has happened a lot, but it has happened.
But I, I'm looking at, is there someone that is more regional or more local, that, that, you know, if we've got it, and we say, look, we've, we've got a bear, we've got, we've followed the process, who can be there that they can, they can respond in a time that can-
Well, to be clear, we're talking about two different things, right?
So I wanna, I wanna take it down a level, not, not a depredation permit where there's a taking of the bear. I wanna, I wanna have a process where we have a bear that's probably a trap-tagged haze, I know you changed, I don't know what the last one, trap-tagged?
Monitor.
Monitor. If we have a trap-tagged monitor bear, we have a process to then, when McKenzie's not available, to then get that bear trapped-tagged and taken away and monitored. 'Cause depredation is, that's the last, that's the last gasp, right?
Yeah, depredation isn't going to be an immediate solution, because you have to apply for a permit. So no one's, you know, no one's standing in their house applying for a permit while the bear is, you know, in their kitchen.
And we can't, we can't identify them yet. I mean, that, that's part of, part of the trap-tagging haze, and actually, the question I had was, I don't know how many DNA kits we have out there. But, you know, we, we can't, we don't know, if we see a bear in town, unless they're actually in the house, we don't know which bears, we don't know which bears are the problem bears, right?
So wouldn't we therefore probably analyze our wildlife management and change our, adapt our wildlife management plan to what our current situation is? And this would all be taken up in that new plan if we can do it quickly? So can we agendize that as a, as a solution? It's because we can talk about all the solutions right now, but we're just, that's basically what, what the wildlife management maybe committee would do. And going with the suggestions of having a member of Fish and Wildlife, members of the community, two members of city council to draft a, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Fisher thought, and then-
So should, I mean, do I have to, can I say that now, or do I have to wait to future, because it's adapted to now? It seems like that would be the solution of what we need to do. 'Cause we're not gonna come up with an answer right now.
I think one, yeah, one solution, for sure, yeah.
Did you have a question?
A question, a question for the council to consider, and maybe to, to pose, is, um, the, the staff, state staff here said that they do track bears and they get hourly, sounded like, updates on where those bears are. Is that information shared with our police department, is my question? So are police aware of where those bears are?
Great question, and I have in my notes with a question, something about coll, so I'm assuming that's the collaring, not the tagging? And collar if available, I think is what you said. So these aren't abundant resources, I'm assuming.
Yeah, so I guess, I guess the question is, is how many bears in our region are collared, and how many can be collared in the upcoming months?
And is that helpful to our PD to, will they have access to knowing what these collared bears are doing? Is that something that your department would monitor? I know there was a lot going on, so we're trying to find some type of, not a solution to the whole problem, but-
Actionable items.
Yeah, so some kind of partial issue.
Okay.
So I can answer the collared question of it. So I can answer details of collars, whether or not the data can be shared is, is a higher level than me, that's a Tim or Kevin question. As far as the collars, so just a little bit more information about them, 'cause I think that might be helpful for y'all in the public to understand as well what we're talking about. So these collars are radio telemetry and GPS. So not only do I have hourly fixes that come in, as long as the caller has access to Sky, and as long as the caller gods are with us, collars will come in every hour, it'll, it'll give us a fixed point. So it's not a real-time thing, I can't like look, you know, oh, the bear is wandering down Main Street right now. It is in our historical data, and sometimes that data doesn't update for twenty-four hours, you know, we're like, I don't know why, but, but, but that's what happens. But it is a really useful tool still. I can also then go out, let's say, maybe the caller hasn't given me fixes, or maybe I want to try to find that bear to recapture it for whatever reason. I can go out with my, my antenna and my little unit, and I can try to find that bear on the ground. So I can say, okay, this is the last known location, I know where the bear is. I can then put in that bear's collar frequency, and then figure out where that bear is. And that, that is in real time, that requires me to be on the ground, but it does provide real-time data. So that's what those collars are. As far as how many bears are collared right now, I'm, one, two, three, four? Four. Four collared bears right now that are out there on the landscape across Region Five. So Santa Barbara, Ventura, LA counties for, for the bear area. We also have, you know, Orange and San Diego, but don't have any bears there. So, so we have four collars out on the landscape there. So that's how many we've got right now. We have two and a half more available right now, again, but that's region-wide. As far as how quickly we could get those collars out, that is really situationally dependent, and I know that's the frustrating answer. But one, you know, what's going on? Do I have an emergency I have to respond to? Do I have something else that's going on? Do I have a community talk? Like, how am I available to get staff to help me go capture, attempt to capture that animal? The other thing is, is to capture White Thirty-four, who was the bear that was, was captured on the nineteenth. That took since late July, I believe, was when we started attempting to capture. And I was, I could not tell you how many hours I was here, you know, on a weekly basis, most of the time, every day, or at least, you know, three or four days out of the week, just twelve hours, sometimes longer, just trying to get this one bear. So it is extremely labor-intensive to try to get bears, and that's something the public just generally doesn't understand, because you've never tried to capture a bear, why would you know that? But it is really difficult, these animals don't just walk into traps, or walk in front of my dart, or, you know, maybe the dart situation is not safe for me, or the animal, or the public, like, am I gonna, if I dart that animal, is it gonna run onto a main road and somebody's gonna hit it? the dart situation is not safe for me, or the animal, or the public, like, am I gonna, if I dart that animal, is it gonna run onto a main road and somebody's gonna hit it, risking, you know, them's safety and the bear? There's a lot of things that we have to consider when we're going to capture an animal, and so, you know, those things also make it a challenge, so. It's, it's a difficult question, it's a complicated question, um, but the collars have really been a useful tool, and we again have gotten a new set of collars that are supposed to come in, or, or are in soon, so hopefully we'll have a couple more available on the landscape as well. The other thing too with us collars is, they're not a universal fit. So I have, you know, a fifty-five, a fifty, a fifty-five, a sixty, a sixty-five centimeter collar, and those are the sizes they come in, they can be like adjusted down. But if I only have, you know, a fifty-five centimeter collar left, and I capture a bear with an extra circumference of sixty-three centimeters, I'm not gonna be able to collar that bear with that collar. And so, you know, we, we can size down a little bit, that's a little more forgiving than sizing up. But again, there's, there's limited availability, and we've definitely come into that in the past, where we just don't have an available collar that will fit a bear. We don't love that, it's not the ideal situation, but, but there are a lot of challenges to getting these collars out. Tags are, are much easier, we definitely, every bear that I get a hand on gets two ear tags. It, it, at the very least gets individually identified that way, the collars are kind of the bonus content for, for our capture efforts. And again, genetics too, are, are, we get ear punches when we put the ear tags in, so just like cattle tags and the animals are nice and sleepy, they're not feeling anything, but we'll, we'll get an ear punch, and as well, um, hair to then send up to our lab to, to hopefully be able to identify. So even just capturing an animal can be helpful for us, working forward, getting genetics, even if we don't get an animal collared. So, I know that was a very long-winded answer to a collar question, but I hope that helped explain and, and kind of contextualize what we're dealing with.
Are you still trying to trap currently?
Not right now, not in Sierra Madre right now, we've, we're kind of looking at, at other cities, especially since we've seen the, the significant decrease in, in calls since White Thirty-four was captured and, and, and moved up into the hills. So after that, um, since calls went down dramatically, we're, we're trying to see, okay, where's the, the next kind of hotspot of activity? Doesn't mean we won't be back, it just means that we're not here right now.
Councilmember Goss has a.
Uh, how, how much of those collars, and could we, could we help provide them for you? Would that help?
I, I don't know. Collars definitely are, are a limiting factor, and they are rather expensive. About five thousand dollars a collar.
Each?
Each. Yeah.
How long do those batteries last, and how?
Yeah, no, that's a, a great question, so batteries.
I'm assuming that's why it's hourly breadcrumbs, right?
Exactly, so collars typically last about two years. The other thing with our collars that, that make them really cool is they will, one, automatically drop off after two years. We also have cotton spacers on them, so, you know, it, maybe the, the battery wigs out, or the collar doesn't drop, it will still wear, so that animal's not like stuck in that collar forever. And the other really cool thing too is, I can go out with a, a antenna. Essentially, if I, maybe I collar a younger bear, and collar fit, you know, looked good, but then six months later, we're like, oh, that collar's fitting really tight, I can go out and drop that collar, right then and there, um, for animal welfare, too, if we, if we deem. So, those are the.
And so because they are limited, what is your criteria? Like, why, like, why these four bears?
Yeah.
Have collars? What, what was the delineating factor?
Yeah, no, that's a great question. Um, it is kind of where the animal is, we, we try to spread them out, right? We, we are interested in data, and so we're trying to look at across the corridor, the Two Ten Corridor, so it's not, and up in the Los Padres and Santa Barbara as well. We really wanna get a good understanding of behavior of animals, and, you know, are there different patterns we're noticing in different areas, just like you said. So we can figure out what's gonna work in different areas for communities across our region and our, our management area. So that's kind of that one, and then again, beyond that, you know, we, we go into it thinking, like with White Thirty-four, we knew there was a high level of conflict in the area, and we wanted to really make sure we had that animal, getting the data that we could, and making sure that we had um, all the information that we could arm ourselves with in this situation, so that plays a part. And then collar fit and collar availability, do I have a collar with me that fits that animal? And, you know, do I have a collar period? I've ca- I went over to Region Six with a collar once to, to help them out, like, they needed a collar right then and there, the animal had previously slipped it, and so we, I went over there to be like, here's a collar, because there's a high level situation. We got collars shipped down to us from Region One, which is way northern California, because we were in high need of collars, so.
So how does the, uh, can I have an understanding of track, trap-tag and monitor? How do you monitor without a collar? Um, are you relying on residents and?
Yeah, exactly, no, that's, that's where the public comes in in those reports, so now when it's, I had a bear in my trashcan, let's say. It was, oh no, I had a, had bear blue eighty-one in my trashcan, and so that can then still help us establish a pattern of behavior for an animal. Collars are ideal, but, but they're not really required to create that pattern of behavior, let's say there's a home entry, right? And it's, it's, oh, instead of just, yeah, I think it had a white blaze on its chest, and it kinda looked like it had an ear notch, but we're not really sure. You know, there's not really, we can't take action against an animal unless we know, like, oh, it was that animal, just like we talked about. So by having that ear tag, then we can say, okay, you know what, this animal was the one responsible for the actions, and maybe that situation, you know, our G T, our response guidance team, so that goes up the chain, makes the decision, maybe they determine that, yes, this is a depredation permit, you know, applicable bear. So by having those individually identifying markers, even though it's not real-time data, well, it's not real-time data even with a GPS collar, but it's not that fine-scale data, it's still data.
And if we wanted to, to hire someone to trap and tag a bear, is that possible, and is that even, it's something that, that is done?
I don't know that it's done, but I will tell you that Kevin or Tim can answer that question much better than I can. So, passing off the torch, so I don't know who wants it, but you guys can fight over it.
Uh, I'll, I'll take it. Um, I think it would really depend on what your intent of the trapping and tagging of the animal was. So, yes, we have various permitting ways that we can authorize people to, to tag and move animals and look at it for scientific reasons and stuff like that. It really comes back to what the purpose is, what permit they're asking from us, and what we can allow under our code to happen. So, I don't have a simple yes or no answer for you, but there are people in the state who are allowed to ta- tag animals and track them and move them, um, that is allowed. And there are people that, that currently do it, so yes.
So I, I think, big picture here, and we're thinking, you know, we're talking about tagging and, you know, why even, why tag? And that, I mean, that's a question, because we're, again, we're talking about public safety. As we're, as we're thinking about the cana- the, the bears and their candidacy for, you know, being monitored, you know, we used to hear that a habituated bear is a habituated bear, and there's no going back. Now we're hearing, maybe some, the science is saying, maybe, maybe a younger bear, a cub, can be, can be retrained uh, through maybe some haze, hazing out in the wilderness to be scared of people and dogs and everything, and, and, uh, you know, learn how to live out in the wild. Cause we don't, we don't wanna be on a treadmill of just putting animals into the, to, to the resident's point, put them out in the wilderness, and then them trying to find the way back, and then, and then having a horrible demise. We don't want that for our pets, right? We, you know, we, we talk about euthanasia because it's a more humane way to deal with these issues. So like, how do, how do we even, what do we do going forward, and how do we decide which one gets kind of relocated and watched, and which ones don't? And, I mean, it's a hard answer, and it's a hard question, cause we have residents on the spectrum, as, as you may know from other communities, on how to deal with these issues.
Um, first, I wanna just acknowledge that you said it's, it's a hard question, and, and it is. Um, ultimately, we deal with that decision every day across the state of when is it time to remove that animal, when is it time to try and allow it to be wild still? And with bears, there's no, there's no right or wrong answer at this point. Historically, if an animal was, was not acting correctly, it was removed in California, that's, that's the way it was historically. Um, the tide has shifted in public opinion in this state, and people don't wanna see that, they don't wanna see us dispatching animals that there isn't a valid reason why we're doing what we're doing. And so part of the data collection, and I know it's hard to say, we're just collecting data, but it's not just data, it's the data that we use to make that decision of if we're gonna take that animal out of the population, or if it is a cub, can that behavior be removed and not learned, and can that animal be wild? Or has it ga- gone, has that adult gone so far that they will never go back, and we need to really look at taking that, that animal out of the population? A, humanely, and B, so it doesn't pass those traits on down to another generation and, and exacerbate the problem. Um, so it's not an easy answer, and it's the stuff that McKenzie and, and everyone on the ground is trying to figure out for Sierra Madre specifically, cause your situation is different than Lake Tahoe, like you said, it's, in Lake Tahoe, they're willing to have the bears walking down the street as long as they're not in their houses and in their garbage cans, cause they know that, that that's gonna happen. I, I don't know if that's the situation here, you know, uh, as we said, the goal is, if you get in the street, you realize you're there by mistake, and you go back to a wild area, and that's what the goal is here. So every situation is different in what the town, and what the city councils, and what the communities will, will look to and try and do. And so we're trying to play our part in that.
Yeah, and I think, you know, I've, you know, people would move to Tahoe if they wanna see bears, I mean, people live here, it, it would be great to be like, whoa, I saw a bear. And that's it, right? And it, it was, it was a rare occurrence.
It would be great to see it walking along the ridge, you know, up above the houses up there, yeah, exactly.
So, I think the goal, the goal here is, look, we have habituated bears in our city. There's, there's, looks like there's a, almost a binomial tree here, like, two options. Um, we don't want habituated bears in our city, um, because it's bad for the bears and it's bad for our residents. So I think, I mean, that's our whole goal here, is like, what do we do with those bears? Um, and how do we move forward? So I, I, I know we're not gonna answer it here tonight, but that's, that's our goal for, for our residents and for us as a council with policy, and I know it sounds like your policies are a little flexible, even though you have a fish and game commission that, that drives policy, but I know some, some policy within your department might be a little flexible for looking at us differently.
Yeah, no, absolutely, you know, the determinations of what's a habituated bear, you know, or, or what's a bear, whatever, um, those are not, you know, check a box and it fits this, those are, what are the behaviors, how long's it been doing it? What are the, what does that entail? Um, I know, I think there was a great suggestion, which was to go back to the wildlife plan and really dig in and put some steps in there that make sense for the community to implement at a community level, that makes sense for us to help and implement for, and makes sense for, for the city to participate in as well. And I think with that, you can at least get at those first couple steps to make some progress on the situation.
And that addresses our needs, but again, I mean, you have policies that you have to create too, and with research and validating your new policies. And I hope that when you guys go back to how you address new policies, we look at, you know, the changes that's happened with wildlife across California, not just the bears. And we used to worry more about extinction, and now we're worrying about overpopulation, and so many instances, not just the bears, we're looking at, you know, overpopulation in Catalina with deer, you're looking at, you know, all these different issues. And, and coyotes and mountain lions going everywhere more.
And brook trout everywhere.
Yeah.
They're not trout, by the way.
It's definitely no secret that some stuff is doing really well, and some stuff is not, and our job as a department is to manage both of those and, and make it equate somehow.
And no longer is doing well meaning overpopulated, we find that that's not doing well.
Too, yes, absolutely.
Well, I feel like we've exhausted this conversation, but, um, do we have any action for, for, uh, staff or, um, future agenda items regarding this issu- issue?
I mean, I, I think we have multiple levels, right? I think, I think we have to coalesce around next steps, and I feel like there's, I hope, maybe we can organize ourselves around kind of like hyper-local, city, you know, department, state, right? Because there's the funding that we need to be talking to, you know, some of the member Holden and others about, and making sure that, you know, we're advocating for that, and maybe that's also, you know, talking to the cog and our, our, our neighbors. And then there's, you know, the interaction that we have with the department, and how we can get them involved in, you know, updating or putting meat on our, uh, the bones of our plan. You know, that's sort of our job too at the city level, but then the hyper-local is, you know, is the communication. You know, do we do another door-to-door situation like we did in the canyon, where we, you know, tell people, this is the policy, this is what's gonna happen if you don't, you know, if you don't, um, you know, this, this neighborhood watch, I think is another really good way to, to start, you know, in- improving communication, cause then it's like neighbor to neighbor, right? Cause like, you know, people go to the neighborhood watch, at least it used to be, like, I would get an email from my neighborhood watch, you know, commander, and say, we met the other day, you know, and this is what happened, and like, you know, they would give out periodic updates, and so that could include this. I mean, I just feel like there's, you know, I, we need to sort of organize ourselves, because we're kind of like, there's lots of good ideas, but we need to figure out, you know, kind of at what level, and then I guess put people in charge of
Prioritize.
Implementing those things.
Yeah, great point, I mean, we had, we had that one resident say, I was surprised that nobody had said this, and I think very good points. Um, our communication could be improved, um, I don't know if that means door hangers, um, and then followed up with wildlife watch, what we talked about earl- la- la- um, earlier, to then, we just, we don't just say, do one thing and then ignore it, we need to have a, a continual type of process, and maybe that is like a wildlife watch, like neighborhood watch, right? Um, somebody that's willing to go door-to-door, to remind their neighbors, hey, um, this is what we need to be doing.
Well, and then there's just the fact that some people are gonna get cited, and that's, that's the most direct communication, is that you need to stop doing this, and if you don't, then this is gonna escalate.
And that's one, you know, and that's one piece of the puzzle, the other piece is, you know, we need to make sure that we're constantly communicating with our partners in Sacramento and regional, to, to then make sure habituated bears are not living in our city. I mean, that's, we can, we can prevent new bears from coming out of the mountains and, and not becoming habituated, but the current population, well, we can work towards it, right?
Yeah, yeah, no.
I mean, that, that wall that you, that, I, I love the vision of this wall of this region, just, you don't wanna come here, cause there's nothing for you here.
I think that's the next project, though, is also not creating the wall, but we don't have a wall, because we're the only ones here with La Cienega that have a policy.
Well, yeah.
It's like not a wall, it's like a, a channel, it's down through Arcadia, and, and next door. We have to get them on board.
So, so, I, I, I like what Councilmember Creve said about the, um, the, the local, the city, the region and the state, and I think we've got, had a good conversation about the local. We've mentioned some of the, the, the region stuff, I, 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 based on my experience in talking with folks, I, I think that, I mean, we need to keep trying it, but that's the one I'm least optimistic about, just because I.
I feel like once we get our bear cans and the corridor opens, I, I mean, I, I hate to say it that way, because I don't, I don't want it to seem like we've strong-armed people, but, I mean, those are, I mean, if we are right, and that's gonna change behavior, I suspect that that, you know, the numbers next July might be the same, they'll just be spread out.
Yeah.
You know, beyond Sierra Madre.
Yeah, but we have to be careful, cause the other option is more home entries, as well, so we wanna make sure we're prepared for that. So.
No, you're right, but I was just responding to the, the reticence of our neighbors.
Right, so, so.
And, but, but, we've talked about, we've, we've kind of danced around this, I mean, to Pasadena, coyotes are very important. So if we, if we, we can couch it with our regional partners as a total wildlife management plan and population plan, um, maybe we have more traction than just focusing on bears, that, cause that's, I mean, it used to be coyotes were our issue, but we don't, we still see them, and they, they still are, but there's a bigger animal in, in town now that we're a little more concerned with. Uh, because we, we heard coyotes howling last night, and there were, you know, you hear, you hear them during certain times of the year where they're all in a pack, and they're, they're going at it.
I think that's a great idea too, because the mountain lion has made it down to San Jacinto Boulevard.
Mountain lion as well, we're seeing them on Mountain Trail and.
Pasadena near PHS.
So I think, uh, with our regional partners, um, maybe a total wildlife management type of issue along with communication with you and seeing what's best, because you're the experts, and I've said that multiple times before you're here. Up here, yeah, we're, we're experts in our own things, but wildlife management and biology is not one of them. Um, but we do, again, I say, I said it a hundred times, I'll say it again, public safety is paramount for our residents, so we wanna make sure, um, they're safe.
So, so, we've done a good job, you know, we've got the bear cans, we've got the one example here, that's gonna get them out of the garbage, but to your point about them going into homes, what do we do about that? I mean, I, I recently heard a, a report from a, from a small community up, uh, Pine Mountain Club, which is up, up, up near the, the, the peak at the grapevine. And they had a hundred and thirty-seven break-ins within like a thirty-day period. And what the answer was for this small community, and again, it's kind of an island, it's like, you know, Tahoe, the bears can go any direction. But what they're saying is that if you leave that house for any amount of time, you close your blinds. What is it that we, what is on the table for us to keep the bears from breaking into homes? What are the options?
I'm glad you brought that up, I feel like, if, if we're offering our people something practical, that's, that's gonna have to be it.
Right.
Until the data comes in and we have some, something actionable to actually do something with habituated bears, they're gonna be here next spring and summer, and they're gonna try breaking in. So, so let's talk about that, should we offer? I know that, uh, I talked to Mary Carney, uh, the lady who testified about the bear being in the kitchen. Uh, as it turns out, her, her husband Dave came up to me, and Trader Joe's, and just told me about, showed me the picture of the bear, uh, in his kitchen. Um, but yeah, I thought their, their, their solution was they're spending two thousand dollars on a security door instead of the screen door they have. A big steel door, so, you know, presumably that's too big for, for the bear to to tear down. So maybe that's the next step, maybe we ought to be talking about that. Notifying people about the need for reinforced windows and doors. Cause you're gonna have screens, then have some, I don't know.
I don't want bars on my windows.
I don't either.
I don't live in cell phone.
I don't, I don't, look, but, but we're, we're, we're kinda conceding here, aren't we? That this is gonna be a problem for a while.
It's gonna, yeah, the ultimate, we're not, let's, we're not backing down on our ultimate goal, but we need to make sure that our residents are safe in interim.
I mean, the other thing that sort of was unsaid tonight, and we had a number of residents talk about how frustrating it is that they are doing all of the right things, all of the things that we say they're, you know, they're doing and they're still, you know, uh, you know, experiencing this incursion. The fact of the matter is, their neighbors aren't, and that's, that's, that's really, it's really one of those situations where it has to be a collective effort. Like, if my house is the one that's doing all of the right things, but I'm surrounded by people who aren't, the bear isn't gonna be like, oh, she's good, so I'm not gonna bust her da- her fence down, I'm gonna go over there, because they're clearly the ones that have the trash out. Like, they're not making that distinction, and so, part of the, you know, I, I agree that we need, we need some practical steps about, you know, bear-proofing your house, but I also feel like some of this education, like, we need, I personally feel like we need to amp the rhetoric of like, everybody needs to do their part, because even if you're not feeling affected, y- your actions are harming your neighbors.
Yeah.
And like, and create a sort of a community kind of response, a, a collective responsibility, because, I mean, to hear that people, three weeks ago, are feeding bears is horrifying to me, like, it's one thing, oh, I forgot I fed my dog outside and he didn't eat it, and I left the dog food out. Like, that's one thing, but like actively feeding bears in this time, you know, this day and age, with all that's been going on, I mean, that's just, that's just horrifying to me.
Yeah, I mean, and there's, but, yeah, it's tough, because we, we, our quality of life is important to us. We wanna have swim parties and barbecues in our backyards with our families, and, you know, this is, it's vital, uh, to our mental health and the way we, we live and communicate, so, um, I, it's hard, it's, it's hard men, you know, we are humans, we're all humans here. Um, it's, it's, I don't think that we wanna swallow that pill of no more barbecues and no swimming, right? Uh, that's not what we, we wanna work towards.
No, we don't.
So, how quickly could we decide, uh, design and distribute a communication to the city? A, a, a mailer to the city, I mean, we can do it through po- through, through, um, social media, I know that's pretty quickly, but, but getting something out to, to all of the residents.
We have the information, we have the wire, it comes in the.
Right, I'd, I'd, I'd see that's why I'm saying.
But I think it has to be multiple, obviously, because there's people that don't.
No, but I mean, in terms of the content, I mean, we publish it every, every time in the, in the, in the Village News, I mean, it, it.
They don't read.
I know, but in terms of content, we have, we have the content.
Right.
We need to figure out a, a, other ways of disseminating it to.
Multiple.
Right.
To get, to get the information out, I bet, I'm just saying the actual creation of the information is not something we need to do.
And, okay, understood, so, when, when could we get something, I mean, be- because we're in hyperphasia right now, it, it, to me, it's like, you know, i- i- it's probably in our best interest to be doing it, like, this week, next week, I mean, when could it drop?
I think it can drop next week, what I'd like to do is take the information that we have, meet with Fish and Wildlife, make sure that, um, that information is, is, is appropriate, um, and we can design something and have it out in the mail within a week, I would think.
Yeah, I think to that resident's point, it shouldn't be, um, the whole laundry list, right? It should be like the most important things, um, and also, by the way, you could have a penalty if you're feeding bears, right? Maybe that's the highlight, but.
Yeah.
Like a nice QR code or something to direct them to the page where they can read everything.
QR code is definitely.
Or, and, and.
Do, or don't?
And, 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 and a website.
No, I'm saying multiple, you need to have multiple ways for people to get information, so you can reach every single person.
Right.
You have to be able to do it on mail for those who get mailers, you know, with social media, but then you have a ton of people that aren't on social media. Webpages, everything, in order to reach the most. I liked someone's idea, it was the magnet on the refrigerator.
My refrigerator isn't magnetic.
I know, I know, everyone has the stainless.
All right, so, how we doing here, are we?
So, 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 I mean, going back to, to Mayor Protam's structure, so, so, w- we're now at, we've got the, the local, the city, the region, we've got the state here, is there anything more that we need to be doing? I mean, to me, you know, the fact you've got, what, six people from the state here is, is significant, and I'm very, very thankful for that. Are, is there more that we need to be partnering with them on from tonight? I, I, I can't think of any, but I just throw it out there for all those smart people here on the council.
We can talk about paying for some of the things that they are short on, I mean.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't like doing that.
We're not loaded, but we might.
We're not loaded, but if it's a public safety issue, I mean, that's.
It is.
But my question too is, how much outreach does, does state Fish and Wild- and Wildlife do with the federal? Since a lot of these animals are in federal land that come into state slash local regions, is there any collaboration with federal entities?
Uh, in short, yes, on their lands, um, the feds really don't do, touch anything once it leaves their land.
Got it.
Like, they, they have no, no jurisdiction over it, and so they, they don't deal with that, uh, for Forest Service, the Fish and Wildlife Service does, but has to be particular things. Going back to what you guys were talking about, the outreach stuff, there's a lot of good stuff that's already out there, there's a Bear Wise, which the department supports, which is a nationwide campaign and has great resources that you can provide people, you can obviously develop your own. One of the things we've seen in communities is actual face-to-face talks at, you know, farmers' markets and places where the community gathers, and there's people at, so you can actually talk to people about what it is. I mean, we all know, we all get mailers and then mail, and what happens to them, you know, um, and so, uh, I, I mean, even your garbage can thing, like, taking that out for a roadshow and showing people what it is, how it works, and why it's important, you know, just open people eyes to what's going on out there, and, you know, we'd be more than happy to help as much as we can. Um, we have, you know, information officers in our department that are, that's their job, is to put information out there to the public, so, um, we can help out with some of that as well, but, yeah, I, I mean, there's lots that can be done, yes.
All right, here's what I suggest. So, we've covered at least, at least some initial steps on the local level, I think that, you know, that feels good that we have something specific and actionable. At the next level up, I guess, would be this idea that, that Councilmember Lowe brought up about reexamining our wildlife management plan, and perhaps setting up a subcommittee, kind of, you know, similar maybe to the Transportation Subcommittee, where we have, you know, s- multiple stakeholders, and that, that project sort of gets underway, that's not gonna be a next week kind of thing, and, and we get, um, you know, the, uh, representatives, um, from Fish and Wildlife to participate in that either periodically or whatever makes sense. And then I think the hardest thing is regional and, 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 and sort of state lobbying, for lack of a better word, and I think we just need to think about what that looks like and figure out strategically. I mean, one thing I keep coming back to is we're in the middle of election season, and we have a lot of turnover happening in our area, both at the state level and the federal, I guess not so much at the federal level, but the state level, and, you know, we don't know how that's gonna all play out, but it, it seems to me that, that that's a time when we can get people to pay attention, you know, when they're, they're, when they, you know, want attention from us. And so, it strikes me that, um, you know, that, that's something to think about in terms of maybe making some regional connections, because obviously those folks are having, you know, having outreach and tentacles into multiple areas locally, and, you know, maybe help us connect with folks who are, I don't know, that, that's a little bit more nebulous to me, but I think we just need to like, think about the next step there, and I, I'm, I'm a little bit willing to make that a more long-term project.
Yeah, I, and I think, I think the, the voice of our county government shouldn't be ignored. Our, our county supervisors do, uh, swing a large stick, a, a large budget. Um, not that we can get budgetary from them, but I think they have influence in Sacramento, um, as well, so.
I don't know why we couldn't get budget from them, like, if we had a regional, if we wanted to fund, you know, a Mackenzie that was specific to the, or Mackenzie herself, um, you know, regional to, you know, this, this area, why would that not be LA County? I mean, why would that?
Exactly, it should be.
Yeah, no, it should, yeah, I agree.
And there are so many.
And I don't know, I, I just don't, I haven't, haven't heard them talk about that program on a county-wide basis, um.
Well, let's make that an actionable item.
The county.
Mo- yes, lobby Barker, lobby whomever's in her office, see if we can find funding for, for either Ms. Rich or somebody like her in the state, help them pay for that budget.
So, we, we do know that she already supports us, she wrote a letter up to Sacramento supporting, um, our resolution, so, um, we already have the support there. I know there's five on that, that board, but yes, um, I think that's important stuff.
And there's, there could be multiple districts that work here, I mean, again, to, to the extent that we wanna like, zoom out and make this a wildlife issue that's maybe not even just foothills, like, if we wanted to fund something for Southern California, there would be more than just Barker's district.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, it's unfortunate, to your point, it's unfortunate we have our senate, senator, state senator and our assembly member, with their twelve years happening exactly at the same time, that that turnover is rough, but their, their districts.
For a year.
Yeah, exactly, and, but their districts don't completely overlap one hundred percent, and there's other, there are other, um, representatives, assembly members on other corridor areas that we could hopefully talk to our regional partners and start building, you know, entire coalition.
Maybe we could have a delegation of council members calling these people, have lunch with Barker, Portantino. I think, I think Chris Holden's with us, based on what he said tonight publicly, I think he's gonna help us.
Maybe he's the last up after we go to all those other folks and say, this is what, this is what.
As long as he says unappropriations.
Our other committees too.
Yeah.
Okay, so, I know there's no action to be taken, but do we have, do we have some direction, I know we've been spitballing a lot up here, but.
I, I do have some direction, and, and, um, Mayor Protam talked about forming a, a committee, I think we have, we can defer it back to the Natural Resources, uh, Commission, um, to work with staff and Fish and Wildlife, um, on looking at the wildlife management plan and making adjustments as needed. I do have a meeting, uh, scheduled with Sanger Valley Council of Governments to look, uh, I think it's this Thursday, to look to see how they could support this as a regional, um, issue, um, and it's not just bears, it's coyotes, mountain lions, and other, and other wildlife. And, uh, we do have some direction on, uh, moving forward with a, uh, communication plan, that's not just one week, that's ongoing, um, that's targeted. And so, those are the items that I have, I don't know, did I miss?
And then also, uh, did you mention some type of internal communications going out to residents?
Yes, we just said the communication plan.
Okay, sorry, yeah, okay.
So, does that group overlap for re- analyzing the wildlife management plan that you're talking about going through environmental, or is that a separate group?
I think he's saying in lieu of a subcommittee.
Okay.
I mean, unless they, I mean, they may decide that that makes sense to bring together some more stakeholders, much like the transportation, like, if they wanna bring certain community members on, or.
And then bringing back to dollar and cents, um, can you remind me of our schedule with a human wildlife conflict specialist as far as when that position's going away, because, um, we wanna make sure that we have the, you know, the triage, or we're, we're, we're able to, when there's a, an issue in, in the city, we can take care of it quickly, rather than just letting those things kind of, bad things happen. I don't, we, we wanna avoid bad things happening.
Yeah, the current funding for those positions ends at this fiscal year, which is this June coming up. Um, you know, uh, as with most of our things that we have that are on one-time funds, we're working with the, um, Budget Analyst Office to see what we can try to propose to move forward and keep and that type of stuff, but at this point, there's no guarantee of any of that, and, yeah, so we have till the end of this fiscal year.
And what was the, 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 the logic of this one being the one-time funds? I don't know if that was your question, but it, but, why was this just a one-time funding thing?
Well, I think what happens in the state is typically we get, um, one-time funds for things that are, are, um, thought to be periodical, so, dealing with wildfire or drought or floods when it came, or those types of things. Usually we use that time to either do what's necessary, or in this situation, learn that this is not a periodic thing, this is an ongoing issue that we need to have some sustained funding to deal with, and that's where we now go back and, and make that case for sustained fund to continue the, continue the work.
Another big thing, and I know it's been said a little bit about, we don't even want peo- we don't want bears in houses at all, right? Regardless of their intent, as you, as Councilmember Lowe stated, um, and we don't want our officers discharging lethal firearms either. Like, what is the, what is an interim solution to getting, well, making sure that we have somebody that can like tranquilize and, and take away a bear that is, has been acting poorly?
I mean, I can go back and look, I don't know if any law enforcement agency in the state has worked directly with us to have the ability to tranquilize animals and move them, I would have to look into that and see what laws and regulations we have that would govern that. I do think there's a space in the interim right now that we, with DNA collection, have the ability to, um, find and identify those bears that may be the one or two that are really causing the problems, and then look at them on our policy and see if there's a different approach that we can take for those bears as well, um, so that's something that we can do on our side also, um, so, yeah, there's, there's a couple options.
Okay.
I was, I was just gonna say, just to follow up on the, the point about the funding, I mean, if you could provide, uh, our, our staff with information, you know, sort of granular, like, like, as some of the member Holden said, you know, tell me how much you need, what, what, what's, I mean, we, we need to be specific, I think, here, and to the extent that we can be helpful in your efforts, you know, the more information that we have, the better. So, we don't need to talk about it now, but if you could just provide that information, so we can include that in our outreach to say, you know, this is specifically what needs to happen.
Yeah, absolutely, we can do that.
No, that's, that's fine, I mean, yeah, I just wanna make sure our, we're, we're looking at the, what happens next, right? And now, what, what happens if, if we have a problem bear currently, and we're not waiting, um, from somebody who had to come from Ventura or Santa Barbara, you know, that's, that's my fear, um.
My fear is that there's no one after July.
Well, yeah, but I'm, I'm talking, you know, currently, I mean, and I know, and I know we said, we said this back in April, when we signed our resolution in April, the bear activity had, had tapered off quite a bit. We just got us, we had a, it just happened in April that we were able to get that resolution together, and, you know, I stated that night that, look, things are quiet now, but wait till the summer, they're gonna pick up again, because there is a cycle, um, so, uh, we need to not lose sight of that, we need to keep, keep at it and, and keep going. Now, I just wanna thank you, we, I mean, we have a, I don't, I don't know if people realize that your position, you're a deputy director, um, that, that's, that's serious, so. My point is, I, I feel as though we're being heard, um, that, that your department sends a de- deputy director out of Sacramento down here to talk to us and have, have a discussion with the council and the residents, um, not really discussion.
Well, I mean, and we haven't even mentioned that the director actually met with the two of us when we were in Sacramento, so, I mean, we've gotten a lot of access, and we really appreciate that.
And we, we're, we're committed to, um, thoughtful and continued good communication between our city and, and your department, um, we are committed to that.
Yeah, and, and from our perspective, um, seeing a city council that takes the steps that you guys have taken and is invested in this issue as much as you are, um, is, is fantastic. I mean, I can't tell you how many places ignore these types of things, and you guys are listening to the constituents and taking real action to, to deal with the problem, and I'm here to take real action with you, so that's why I'm here.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, anything else?
Mayor?
Yes, please.
One, one option that wasn't discussed, but for, for the council to consider is, for those individuals who are intentionally feeding bears, it, an administrative fine, an administrative citation process may just be a slap on the wrist, because it's a notice of violation, and then a hundred dollar fine for the second violation, a two-hundred dollar fine for the third violation. Another option is, is criminal enforcement, that doesn't result in imprisonment, but it results in hefty fines. So, because of, this would be considered at, at most a misdemeanor, and if you wanna, if they wanna plea it down, an infraction.
Yeah, I mean, it's getting, it's getting that serious, but.
It is getting that serious.
Yep.
Something to think about.
It is something to think about, um, I don't think we should.
I think that maybe is something maybe for the wildlife management plan to think about, maybe there's a second layer for habitual, for habituated bear feeders.
But we, I, I, I think, I think it's worth sending to the Natural Resources to discuss it. I think it should come back before us, before, uh, the full decision is, is made, I think, I think that's what.
Yeah, no, I mean, they, they, yeah, they can't make, yeah.
I understand, I, I, I just wanted to make sure that that was clear, 'cause, 'cause, 'cause I, I could see them think about it and think about the impact of it, but, yeah, I think it, it should come back to us as part of a package.
Okay, so, we're not done with this issue, um, this is just kind of the, the starting.
Round one.
Round one, yeah, um, so, do we have any more questions? Can we, we don't have any actionable item here, but we can, uh, move on? Okay, all right, so, do we have any ideas for future agenda items?
Bears?
I mean. You know what I mean, anything outside of that?
Nothing.
No, okay, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Thank you.